This 20th day of April 2021. Thank you all for coming. Are all the commissioners online? We're all here. Okay, great. So it's a little breezy outside today. I don't know if you noticed. And humid. Anyway, so in the normal course, we usually ask the commissioners to give their commission report. I see where they're sort of at the bottom of the agenda, but I thought maybe we'd take them up first and ask each of the commissioners to give a short report as to things they've done and things that are happening in their districts. So I'd like to start with the vice mayor, District One.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor. Good to see you. And let's see, District One, what is happening? I did my first vice mayor duty. I got had a TV interview on Friday about the $10 and a half million dollars we got from the state of Florida. Thank you, Governor DeSantis, for our storm water project. So it's my understanding now, we went from seven neighborhoods that will receive the storm water improvements. Now we can add an additional neighborhood with the $10 million we received. So I know we'll have that conversation later as a commission. In addition to storm water, did you also know that there will be water quality improvements with those seven neighborhoods and the new grant? I learned that a little bit more, too. So thank you, Raj, for helping me out on that. And it was good to give that update on NBC Six. And another event, Chris, that I wondered if you had a little bit more information on. So, you know, the USS Fort Lauderdale is probably almost built. I know we are talking about having a ceremony. I thought it was supposed to be this summer. Do you have any information about that, Chris?
I do have information on the topic, but I really don't have any answers. So we did reach out to them, and there's nothing scheduled at this point, no christening scheduled. We did talk to the captain, who has significant interest in coming to Fort Lauderdale, just has not had the clearance yet to be able to travel here. So as soon as he gets that, he wants to come and meet with you all and talk with you about the future of the USS Fort Lauderdale, but nothing really planned at this point.
Okay, so it's still in the shipyard. So the first step would be a christening, and then the second step, it would come here to Fort Lauderdale, I'm assuming for the commissioning.
That's what was going to happen before. So I don't think that would change. I just don't know how that works.
The timeline. Okay, so we would meet the captain before that, the captain of the shipyard, not the captain of the vessel. I guess that would probably be, yeah.
I can tell you.
It's probably the shipyard guy. They probably don't have a captain yet. All these Navy connections.
I've been trying to talk to my Navy friends. So, Chris, it's probably Captain Quarissimo is who you've been talking to, I'm guessing?
That's correct.
Yeah. So he's, so the, when I last talked to him, which Vice Mayor, I probably talked to him about a week ago, and the ship is about 90% complete. They are tracking a possibly a January 7th delivery, which I think means kind of fully complete and ready to be christened, was if I was understanding what he was saying correctly. And yeah, to Chris's point exactly, he'd love to get down here. We're limited in the Navy in our orders right now, so he can't get down here yet. But and then Vice Mayor, I'm not sure, I didn't, I wasn't real clear who else he was kind of, you know, I know there's a Chris, like a commissioning committee. I'm just not sure who that is, Vice Mayor.
I'm not sure either.
We talked to two people. We talked to an Angel Arbosa, who's the Director of Events, and then also the captain that the commissioner referenced. And the update we got is that due to change in leadership in COVID, they've not scheduled a christening yet. And to the captain's point, he's ready to be here. He just needs to be able to be cleared to come.
Okay, super. So it sounds like it's mostly a Navy function and not a local Navy League or something like that involved. But I'm sure they'll be included when the time comes. So good, looking forward to meeting him. And I think the USS Fort Lauderdale will be amazing. And that's definitely once in a lifetime opportunity to have a ship named after our city. That'll be exciting. The biggest thing that happened in District One, though, would be the Inter Miami Soccer Game. So that was exciting. They played hard. It was a good game, and we look forward to more games this season. I think they opened at, what, 20% capacity, and they'll be at full capacity after a few days?
Eight thousand people and 18,000 capacity.
Okay, so divide that, John Herbst, and then, yes. What is that?
Almost half, almost half.
Almost half, okay. So bigger than 20%. So look forward to getting to some more games and cheering on our hometown team. And a lot of meetings, everyone's having their annual meetings now. So it's been, it's been great visiting with neighbors around the district and grand openings. One grand opening in particular was Patrizia's. It's an Italian restaurant in the Galt's, the North Beach shops and restaurants. Very good, the first location outside of New York. And they chose to open in District One. It was excellent. After living in Napoli for three years, I can attest that it's very Neapolitan, which is where their heritage is. And it was lovely food. So that's about it, Mayor. Thanks.
That's about it?
That's it.
Okay. Well, I have to say, I was happy to share most of those moments.
Yes.
District Two, Commissioner Glassman.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Commissioners, everyone. Nice to see everybody. Hope all is doing well. Very quickly, Wednesday, April 7th, we had a mass district meeting, also Victoria Park Civic Association. On Thursday, the 8th, I had one more meeting with the tenants for the EMR, and we're in the process now of setting up a regular schedule for that. On Tuesday, April 13th, I attended a solid waste delegate workshop meeting, which was very interesting. A lot of new developments around the county with regards to where the county is going with solid waste working group information. I will let you know that I am working with Melissa Doyle, who's been just doing an amazing job from staff, to schedule a presentation for an agenda, I believe, the second meeting in May. And we'll get everyone caught up to what's happening with regards to the county's direction, and where all the cities are weighing in, just so everyone's in the loop and understanding where we are with regards to a governing structure and what's been transpiring in the time that I've been attending those meetings. Also, on the 13th, I attended the International Swimming Hall of Fame Board of Directors meeting. As the District Two Commissioner, I sit on that board, and I also sit on the Bonnet House Board. Wednesday, April 14th, I joined our neighbors in Sailboat Ben for their civic association meeting. Thursday, April 15th, Bonnet House Board of Directors meeting. Friday, April 16th, we dropped off a proclamation for the Symphony of the Americas Appreciation Night and their new director, Stephen Haynes. April 19th was Middle River Terrace Neighborhood and Progressive Village. Coming up tomorrow evening, we have the Flagler Village Civic Association meeting and the Point Set of Heights Civic Association meeting. Thursday, April 22nd will be a solid waste working group meeting, and that evening will be the Central Beach Alliance meeting. This Saturday, April 24th, I'll be attending at the La Solis Oceanside Park, an Earth Day event. It's kind of interesting. It's called the Art of the Possible. It's by a group called Ocean Soul, S-O-L-E, and they make art from waterway trash, mostly used flip flops. So that should be interesting. I have no idea what that's going to look like, but I'll find out on Saturday morning. And then after that, I'll head over to the Little Free Library Reinstallation ribbon cutting in Lake Ridge. Tuesday, April 27th, is a Bonnet House Long Range Planning meeting, also a South Middle River Civic Association meeting that evening as well. And pretty much that's it for meetings and groups attending with. Two items I did want to mention, hopefully, Mayor, you can include these people for a moment of silence tonight. But we did see on the beach, Eileen Helfer passed away. And Eileen was one of the founders of the Central Beach Alliance. She also spent 27 years as the president of Harbor Haven condominium. That's quite a tenure. She was always very active in the city. She served on the Beechtree Development Advisory Board. She served on the Citizens Police Review Board. And just this past May, our city did give her a proclamation signed by the mayor, and it was sent over to her condo. They had a very socially distanced, very small farewell to her as she stepped down as president after all those years. Remember, May was a tough time in terms of the pandemic. So it was very, you know, sparsely attended, but on purpose. But we gave her a very lovely proclamation from the city, and unfortunately, she did recently pass away at the age of 83. So if we could recognize her tonight, I think that would be great. I also thought it was really important for us to recognize our former Vice President, Walter Mondale, who just passed away. He was generally a very good man, a very gentleman, and a gentleman and a gentleman. And obviously, as a former Vice President, he was a senator, an ambassador, Minnesota Attorney General, and the first major party presidential nominee to choose a female vice presidential candidate on the ticket. I think it's just worth mentioning him as our former Vice President, who did just pass away. And lastly, Mayor, I did bring up at our last meeting, an interest of mine to have a resolution from the City of Fort Lauderdale, dealing with two bills that were making their way through the legislature, House Bill 1475, which was passed actually already, and Senate Bill 2012. I asked City Attorney to circulate a draft of that resolution, which I believe he did yesterday. I am bringing that up now because we have an interesting process, if there is a process. I'm still trying to figure it out exactly of how a commissioner gets a resolution on an evening agenda. But I guess what I'm asking for is a consensus to move it on as a walk-on item this evening on the evening agenda. And that draft resolution was sent yesterday. So I would love to see if we're able to move forward to that. And that's about it for me.
Well, wait a minute, Commissioner, why don't you relay to the public what the subject matter is of each of those resolutions?
Of course. Actually, it's just one resolution, dealing with two House bills. And basically, this is a House bill that was passed and a Senate bill that's actually on the agenda today, although there's been a lot of late breaking information coming out of yesterday and today with that committee. But these are bills that typically, and this would be the title in our, in our resolution, that ban certain transgender students from participating in athletics. It would be K through 12 and also college. And that's the general, the general topic of the, of the bills, one passed and one pending.
Okay. We can certainly, I think we should discuss that then. This is an opportunity for us to weigh in on this. Just to have full disclosure, I, somebody needs to mute themselves. Okay. Just so that you know, that I personally wrote a letter to the governor, to the president, to Speaker, that's asking that they not approve this measure, because I believe it's discriminatory, and I believe we in Florida can be better people than to try to find ways to discriminate against people, especially marginalized and oppressed group of individuals, as this minority represents. But we, as a commission, might also consider, and in response to your question, you know, how does a commissioner get something on the agenda? This is the way a commissioner gets something on the agenda, by bringing it up at a conference meeting. And, and I'm open to discussion to anybody who wants to comment on this. I believe that the commissioner is asking the commission to agree to allow it to go on the agenda, number one, and that we ultimately want to get a consensus to approve the resolution. Does anyone have any comments with regard to this?
Yeah, Mayor, it's Ben.
Yes, Ben.
I've been opposed to this bill since its inception. It's discriminatory, unfair, unhelpful, and sets a horrible tone for our state, our country, being a accepting, validating community that we are. So I 100% support the commissioner's movement on this.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? All right. Well, being that I'm also supportive of it, I guess that majority at least is in favor of putting it on as a resolution, Alan, so.
Well, hold on, Mayor, hold on. This is what I want to do.
Who's this? Oh, Commissioner?
Commissioner McKenzie.
Yes, sir.
I'm not, you're talking about put this on, what is it? You never mentioned what it is you're talking about. You made some comments general. I think for the public's sake, I know Steve mentioned what he was talking about. You never said what you were talking about, nor did Commissioner Saunders. Tell us what it is you're asking us to do. Then I'm going to tell you and where you want this to go. This agenda, state agenda, Washington DC? I mean, what is it you're trying to do here?
Okay. I believe what Commissioner Glassman has indicated is that there, there was a statute that was passed and signed by the governor, in which there was language in the, in the statute, which denied kids who were, who identified as transgender. Would be denied the right to participate in certain sports activities. And, and again, and maybe Commissioner Glassman, you want to elucidate on this?
Yes, thanks. I'm sorry. I just had to unmute myself. Actually, there are two bills. The House bill has already passed, Mayor. Nothing has gone to the governor yet. But the House bill has passed. Right now, the Rules Committee was supposed to hear this today. It has not gone to the full Senate yet. Although yesterday, there was an amendment to that House Senate bill to make the language much more uniform with the House bill, which led people to believe that it was just going to be able to move quicker that way, because you wouldn't have to reconcile the difference between the House and the Senate bills. But then also today, the main sponsor, Senator Stargell, came out with a statement, and it basically said that it's a very crowded session, and we don't really know where this is going to go. And I think she said something to the effect, in terms of the, you know, letting all people weigh in a little bit further. But it's all very fluid. It's all very up in the air. But this is the bill. And I'm hoping, Commissioner McKenzie, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but I, the resolution did go to all of you yesterday from our City Attorney, the draft resolution, I think at about 3 o'clock, if I am not mistaken, in the afternoon. I'm looking at the, at the email. And it's pretty much our city stating that these, this is not our values. These are not our values. This is not what we stand for as a city. And we value all of our citizens. And this looks to us to be totally against the spirit in which we passed a comprehensive human rights anti-discrimination ordinance back in September of 2019. And this resolution would urge both the House, the Senate, the governor. This would be sent throughout the typical places where we send it, to the governor, Senate President, Speaker of the House, members of the Broward State Legislative delegation, letting them know that we are in opposition to this bill that would deny certain transgender students from participating in athletics. Again, K through 12 and college. I'm also concerned that it would have implications for our parks and recreation programs, maybe even in police athletic league programs. There's a lot of implications that could be, you know, as a result of these bills. So that's sort of it in a nutshell. I can keep going. But again, I would just, if you have a chance to look at that, even before tonight.
No, you're fine. You're fine, Commissioner. And my thing is just that I've always expressed with this commission and the last commission that I don't believe in these philosophical resolutions we send to other cities and to the state and to whomever, where I don't directly have the authority to make that final decision. And I don't want to weigh my politics or my philosophies in the public. So all I wanted to know from the mayor was, is an understanding of how conference works. I don't think it's a majority. I think it's a consensus. A consensus to me, when I read it and understand the denotation, is we all agree. We all agree. So we don't vote here. Consensus, you get a feel that we all agree. So we all don't agree, and we can't say it's a consensus. We've done this in the past. And I don't mind where it goes. I don't want to say I don't care. If that's something you want to do, somebody else wants to do, you guys can do that. But to, to take my name and my equity, not just whatever this bill you're talking about, I don't want to do the philosophical stuff. So. about, I don't want to do the philosophical stuff. So, and that's across the board. I never really participate. But we're making a habit now of, of when it's something we want to do, we bring it up in the form of a resolution, we want to send it up, then we say we have a majority vote. It needs to be a consensus if we're all going to sign off on it. A consensus, not a majority.
No, for sure. If it goes to a vote tonight, you would need three votes.
Well, well, the Mayor just said it's a majority. So if it's not a consensus, it doesn't leave this conference.
Well, I don't want to speak to the, for the Mayor, but I think he means that typically when we give direction to staff, if he feels that at least three out of five of us at a conference meeting agree on something, then it moves forward. That's always been, seems the way we.
No, that's, that's not the way it works, you know. And maybe the, the City Attorney can weigh in on what a consensus mean, what a majority vote is. We can't vote here. But we can say, let's have Bicycle Day tomorrow, all of us, right? Do we have a consensus that moves us forward? A consensus mean we all agree. If it's not a consensus, we either got to figure out how to get a consensus, or it dies. Not so much this, just in general, how we apply the Robert rules of what a conference is intended to do.
Understood.
Well, okay, let me just.
That's what I'm trying to get, not, not your bill.
Robert, you.
But on, when you use the word consensus.
Robert.
It means one thing. We use word majority vote. Yes, sir.
Okay. It would be great if we had a consensus, but we can only ride under a majority situation. So if we don't have a consensus, certainly a majority is sufficient to be able to take it to a meeting.
Not, not in a conference. All I'm trying to do is verify the rules. Where we go with this.
That's, that's how we're going to, and that's the direction.
But, but you can't, with all, with all, with all, I'm not talking about this bill. I'm talking about, I'm talking about a process, a process here. In conference, if we want something to move forward, it must be a consensus, not a majority.
Who says that?
Not, but I've said it time and time again, but the practice of this Commission has been to try to get three and move something forward that not all of us agree on. But then yet, it's a reflection of me. I don't care what it is. It can be raising the flag. It could be walking down the street, chewing gum.
Well, you don't.
If it's a consensus, it's a consensus.
Okay. You don't have to vote.
I don't want to air. No, but that's not the point. The point is, if you're the person that is supposed to run the meetings, can we run the meetings according to Robert's rules? My question was, are we supposed to have a consensus, or do you just say, I'm going to change the narrative, it's going to be a majority vote? That's all I'm asking you. What are the rules here?
Okay. We are a majority commission. So a majority makes, you know, you ask a question, you want an answer, and then you interrupt the person who's giving the answer. So just calm down, and I'll be happy to respond to you.
First of all, I'm not upset.
Here you go again. Here you go again.
I speak with passion. I speak with passion, sir. I speak with passion.
Is it possible for you to stop talking? So the point is that.
I need, I need something read from the Charter.
Let me keep talking while you're talking, because you can't seem to stop talking. So the point is that we have a majority that has agreed that the resolution should come to the meeting tonight as a walk-on. You can or cannot vote in favor of it, it's up to you. Right now, the point was to determine what, what the sense was of the Commission moving forward. There appears, perhaps there isn't a unanimous interest in moving forward with this resolution, but there is a majority interest. Because this Commission works on the basis of majority and not, and not unanimity, it appears that we should move this item forward. Now, if you wanted to know the details.
I agree, but.
The resolution.
Can I ask a question?
The resolution was, was yesterday, everyone had an opportunity over the last twenty-four hours to review the resolution. If you haven't had a chance to do that, you know, you, between now and tonight, you're welcome to review the contents of the resolution. If you have any thoughts about making modifications to it, that's fine, too. And now we talk about tonight when we do the resolution. Right now, we need to move on, because a majority seems to have agreed that it's, why not as a, as a walk-on tonight? And that's how we rule here. It's, it's a base on majority vote. So.
But you, you can't say that's how we rule, because you just ruled on. But I, what I need, what I need is from the City, for the City Attorney to give me an interpretation on, on how this, how this process works here, because maybe I misunderstood how the Charter reads and what we do here in conference and how that works. I don't have a problem with what, what you're doing. I'm talking about a process here, not the bill, a process.
Wallo, do you want to respond to that?
The, I'm not aware of anything in the Charter or in the Code of Ordinances that requires unanimous equivalence to moving something forward for the nighttime meeting. Obviously, a majority is required, but consensus is unanimous versus a majority, so that distinction is correct. But I'm not aware of anything in the Code that mandates that anything at conference be unanimous. Now, that may be something of a policy or a practice to buy, but from a ordinance standpoint or a charter standpoint, that requirement is not there.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, Alan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wallo.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Glassman, do you have anything further? Do you have anything?
No, that's good. No. So, so again, this will be a walk-on this evening. And no, thank you, Mayor, for that clarification. It's what I always thought we did when we got a, a consensus of at least three people. That seems how we've always moved things forward in the past. So I'm glad that that will continue to be the process in the future. And I, I'll look forward to the discussion this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Commissioner McKenzie, do you have a report?
I do not have a report, but I do want to ask a question of the City Manager in reference to our search for a chief. Where are we? And can you give us an update?
Absolutely. Would, would like to do that. We were going to do that later in the meeting, but we'll do it now. Let me turn to our Assistant City Manager, Tarlisha. She's still in the room. She might have gone back upstairs. She was prepared to give a very detailed update. So Commissioner, if I can, if I can track her down, and we'll get back to that question, and I can give you dates.
Absolutely. And while you're doing that, can you also go back and give us a, a response to a question I asked a couple of Commission meetings ago, when the past interim chief entered into a meeting with a rifle? You guys are going to investigate and get back to us with an update. Is there any information that you found from?
I can tell you that the Police Department did investigate. Chief Lynn did investigate. I would rather brief you on that, when we can just give you a call or talk to you in person about it. But yes, it was investigated.
And it was okay to bring a rifle into a command meeting and put it on the table?
So I'd rather not get into how it was characterized in that police investigation. I'd, I'd rather talk about those in a.
So we have, so do we, do we have a formal investigation ever? Or are you guys just talking amongst yourselves and saying, this is the outcome, and would give it to me privately?
The Police Chief.
I just want to know. So I don't know. Is it an investigation? Or is it an inquiry from the chief, and he's just going to give me the feedback?
I don't know that necessarily can split hairs there. But I, I do know that I transmitted the information to the chief. He looked into it, and, and he talked with me afterwards. And I'd be happy to talk with you afterwards as well.
And you didn't feel the need to get back to me privately, but now I come back at a conference to ask you, you want to talk to me privately. But when did you get your answer? Yesterday?
I had it some time ago. I just frankly, with everything going on, that was something that I slipped my mind and didn't.
Wasn't that important?
Respond.
Okay. But I, I asked my question in this setting, and I may ask the Mayor, since he knows all the rules. Do I get it here, or do I get it behind closed doors?
I'd rather talk about matters of personnel in a, in a non-public forum.
Okay. That would be my recommendation as well.
Wallo.
That, that would be my recommendation as well, with regards to personnel matters. I don't know the contents of what's going to be said, and I'd rather know that before it's publicly disseminated.
But let me, let me ask this question, Mr. City Attorney. Were you aware of the, the answer to my question?
I was not.
So my, my whole thing is, I asked a couple of months ago, I mean, the courtesy would be just to have this private meeting, when you meet with me every other Monday, or when we have our, our moments, to give me that update. I mean, at what point do I get an answer to my question? If you had the information?
We can schedule an opportunity to, to discuss.
Okay. So noted. That's the end of my inquiry.
Okay. Commissioner Sorenson.
Do you like, before we move on, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Now, Tarlisha is here. Could we do the update real quick on the Police Chief selection process?
Sure thing.
And, I was occurred to.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, everyone participating today. The Police, Police Chief Recruitment is underway. We have currently thirty-six applicants. I believe right now, the executive search firm is in the process of reviewing those thirty-six applicants. He was on Friday through eight or ten of them. We will be meeting the first week in May to screen, to whittle the list down to between seven and ten, for us to bring forward to the Commission and community.
Seven to ten?
Yes, initially. Well, the initial screening is for the Manager's Office, for the City Manager. And from that, we will whittle the list down even more.
Okay.
The, the goal is to bring between six and seven.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions?
Any further questions? I guess that's it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is that, does that conclude your report, Mr. McKenzie?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, great. Commissioner Sorenson.
Hey, Mayor, thank you. Just wanted to, from event perspective, just wanted to, again, congratulate Vice Mayor and the Commission, and Alan and Chris on, on Inter Miami and the, the first game, long, long anticipated first game, is just a great celebration internationally for, for Lauderdale and our ability to kind of work together and make this happen. And partnership with now Auto Nation and Inter Miami and the city is just awesome. So, and, and Mayor, just touching on that, I mean, my, my hope is that we as a city, and as a community, do such a great job that Inter Miami decides to stay here permanently. That's just my selfish hope. So I just wanted to check, Mayor, if that, if that lines up with our thinking of, of what we'd like to do, and just how we can, you know, be the best host as possible to encourage that.
Well, you know, that would be a, a great dream for the community. It, it obviously is a business decision on their part, as to whether or not they want to continue playing, you know, here in Fort Lauderdale. Keep in mind that should they decide to ever relocate, the stadium is still here. They, they will continue to practice here in Fort Lauderdale. The, the, is it called ULS? The.
USL.
USL. USL team will be, will be based here. The, all the, the kids that would be practicing, all, all the teams that, that they will continue to draw from throughout the community, will be drawn mostly from Broward and Palm Beach, and some from Dade County. So, so, you know, the Academy would be centered here. So even if they play many of their games in Miami, should that ever happen, I don't see much activity in that regard, to be honest with you. As you know, Mayor Suarez from Miami was at the event on Monday, excuse me, on Sunday, and we talked about it. And he, you know, he did not see any significant movement in that regard. So.
Great.
You know, the, here, the, the more it's, 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 the more cemented with the identity of Fort Lauderdale.
Okay, that's, that's great. Yeah.
So you can buy your season ticket for the next, and I can be, I can be guaranteeing you that it'll be played here.
And, and Ben, I guess part of your question would be, are they able to build out the stadium, you know, in Fort Lauderdale to make it their home permanent stadium? Because I do know they need to add to it, if that is the case. So I, I believe, I, I, I think they would probably want it bigger if they choose to make it their permanent home field. And I, I believe there are legally, you know, options and everything else, that they are able to kind of build that out if they need to make it bigger. That's just my understanding that this, like the Mayor said, would have been their training facility. And then usually, like when we went to Marietta, it's a smaller space. And then the Marietta team played in Atlanta, which is at the Amex Stadium, and that was, you know, a bigger stadium. So if they chose to keep it, I would welcome them. I do believe they'd need to build it out a little bit. That, that's my understanding. And I, I think they have the space. I mean, obviously, we'd still keep our twenty acres for the park space. But they have the space on that footprint to make it as, you know, as big and appropriate as they need.
They certainly have been great partners in many different ways, as you know. First, in food distribution during COVID, and now the vaccine, vaccine distribution. You know, they, they really have been great partners and very philanthropic towards our community. So we're very thankful for that. So I think the Vice Mayor has agreed to be their mascot. So maybe that'll keep them here. I don't.
Fantastic. Well, Mayor and Vice Mayor, just know, anything I can do to help, you know, you know, continue the partnership and so forth? I just want, I think it's important. I think it matters. So just, just want to keep, keep advocating for that. So, great.
Commissioner Sorenson? Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. I, I just want you to know how much I agree with you on this, and Mayor and Vice Mayor. But there's one thing I'd love us to work on also, because it would be great if we could do that. But it's the branding. I, I kid you not, when I tell you that I actually saw a local sportscaster conclude his story Sunday evening by saying, live from Miami, when he was standing right in the stadium. And I'm thinking, really? Like, you're a local sportscaster on a major network, and you're saying live from Miami? So maybe we can work on the branding a little bit. That's all.
Yep. And I think, I think Commissioner.
Put a big sign up there.
Of Commissioner Glassman. You know how they have at the Fenway Park, they have that big Citgo sign, like in the distance? We could, we could have like a big Fort Lauderdale sign, you know, just something, you know, that happens to catch the eye of the camera every time they, they pass over the crowd.
Well, Mayor, one thing I am bringing to the Commission for a vote is actually naming the entire sixty-four acre parcel, Lockhart Park, so that we will always refer to it as Lockhart Park. It can be Drive Pink, Inter Miami, at Lockhart Park. So that will help, I think, Steve, and the branding, too. We should see that language in that vote when we move forward to finalize. What are we finalizing, Alan? Something soon.
We're working on some revisions to the, well, we're not working. We're contemplating working on some revisions to the comprehensive agreement with regards to, obviously, COVID-19, you know, took, took a toll on everyone. So we're just kind of adjusting things here and there because of COVID. And so we'll be working on that and including that as well.
Okay. So the comprehensive agreement will come back to us to vote on. And in that comprehensive agreement, I, I have asked to include naming of Lockhart Park, so that we can memorialize that. Also, just to keep you all updated, you know, we are planning on still building that twenty acre park. We're working on those details. We are, I'm getting ready to meet with, you know, the new team at Inter Miami and city staff to kind of finalize what that timeline will look like, and, and all the other details. So we're going to, we're going to meet on that in May.
Very good. Anything else, Commissioner Sorenson?
Yeah, yeah, a few other things. Thanks, Mayor. Alan, is there some, still some permitting, rectifying some permitting costs or something we're still working on, too? For Inter Miami?
I don't.
Chris or?
I don't think there's anything pending.
No, that's, that, yes, there is. Yeah, there's, there's, there's some closeout still yet to do.
Okay. All right. Great. Let's see. The resolution, I thought that's, it's an important discussion, I think, procedurally. I mean, obviously, I, I support the specific one, but also procedurally. So just to get into, open up the dictionary and definition-wise, wait till Chris and Alan are done talking.
Go ahead.
The, so I think we use at times the term consensus. And if I was hearing Alan write, Alan was saying basically, the working definition we're using of consensus is unanimous. However, for bringing a resolution forward in the evening for a vote, if we're defining consensus as unanimous, we don't need consensus, we just need majority. I just want to check that I'm understanding that right.
That is, that is correct.
Correct.
So if that's the case, then we should not use the term consensus anymore in.
That's all I'm saying.
Whether.
That's all I was saying.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And I just wanted to, I agree, Commissioner.
Even, even the last meeting, with the issue you brought up, I said, don't use the word consensus. I mean, we have to use the right terminology. Because if you say consensus, and I'm, I'm not a part of that input, it implicates me. I don't mind. it implicates me. I don't mind what other people do. Do as you please. You have that authority. But when you put my name in it, I want to make sure I, I support it or I give a viewpoint on it. I don't like concurations. I don't like resolutions. I don't really participate in that stuff. But I try to get along with others, but when you use words and no one can define those words for the public, I'm not being contentious. I just want to know that. Is this consensus, majority, and can we do that, the rules? And I think that's a very good thing you did by looking it up. Because obviously, I knew what it was before I asked the question. But it has been said to us in this setting that if it wasn't on the agenda, we shouldn't be talking about it. But it's different strokes for different folks. And I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. But don't contest me when it's a different outcome of an issue. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks. And thanks, Mitch. And though, Mayor, again, I just want to be clear. So any of us, if we would like to bring a resolution forward for consideration, we can bring it forward at a commission conference meeting and then for discussion. And then with a majority, if we have a majority at the conference meeting, then that can come forward for a vote that evening. Or we could say, hey, we'd like to bring this forward to a vote in a couple, you know, the next meeting or so forth. So that's how we do it, right?
That, that has been our practice. That is correct.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Great. Thank you. Then, next topic, for Chris, for you and maybe the chief. But we've, you know, I'm sure majority of us are, have been closely following the Derek Chauvin trial. The jury's now deliberating. We're, the possibility of a verdict at any point is possible. So, Chris, Mayor, I've gotten some questions from community members. Hey, as a city, are we prepared? Should there be protests or, or so forth? And I've been telling folks that, you know, I talked with Chris about this, but that, yes, we're prepared and ready. Some folks have asked, Mayor, if we should communicate that out to the community. I mean, something that, along those lines, I don't know the answer to that, but I just wanted to, one, just get Chris's feedback on are we ready for, you know, whatever we may, may, may see happen depending on the verdict? And then, two, should there be any kind of outward communication?
So I guess my thoughts on that is, first off, you know, we, we pray for and hope for a very calm community response, one that's respectful of the process, recognizing that we're in a process. And so we'd lead with that. To the extent, though, that we deviate from that and there would be some type of community demonstration or community reaction. We have thought about that and been planning for that long before yesterday or the day before. And we're too closely watching. And, you know, to the extent we have to react, we, we will. But we don't really know yet what we're reacting to. And so we've got the whole, whole gamut. And I've talked with the chief and his command staff. And, and I'm confident that Fort Lauderdale is prepared when that decision is officially made. Whether or not we put something out publicly, you know, I, if we were going to put something out publicly, I, I would hope that it would be focused around the fact that, you know, this is a process and that there's, you know, it has to come to an end at some point and that whatever result they get to is, is the one that our judicial system delivers, which, you know, it's not a perfect system, but it's the one that, that we live with. And so I'll, I'll think on that, Commissioner, as to whether or not that actually could work against us or, or if it, it would be a positive thing. But I guess what I want you all to hear is that this has been discussed and, and we hope for a good outcome, but we are prepared if we have to respond.
Great. Yeah, Chris, thank you. That, that sounds good. I appreciate it. I pray for justice and peace in this. So, thank you. Separate topic, Chris and Alan, I think you all are working on this, but just a follow up from the license plate reader discussion. It sounds like contractually, we just kind of got to look at who's the ultimate end user of the data. And it sounds like some of the contracts stipulate the, the neighborhood is. But there's the city issue with that, with being kind of the end user. So any updates on that?
We spoke to, I guess, one, for the lack of a better term, the predominant company that the HOAs have been dealing with. And there is no provision in there that requires the city to be the end user. The HOA can be the end user. In fact, they have such agreements across the state with HOAs. So to the extent that there's any representation that it has to be the city, that's, that's not correct. So we checked with the company today. So it's a matter of policy. As, you know, the policy, I believe, that we've been provided is that the, the agreement should be between the HOA and the company. And then we'd have a separate share agreement to allow that data to be disseminated to the police department, obviously to serve, to serve its purpose, to, to render any investigations that may become necessary. So we are working on those data share agreements. But from the perspective of the HOAs, according to the company that we spoke to today, they are permitted to be the end user for those agreements.
Does that put any legal burden on the HOA, Alan?
Any agreement you execute is going to put a legal burden on whoever executes it. So in, in this case, there probably isn't. You know, we don't have a crystal ball. But to the extent that the cameras are owned by the HOAs and ultimately controlled by the HOAs, even though they're in the city right away under a revocable license, there may or may not be. I mean, I can't render legal advice for them individually, but there is. But anyone who signs that agreement who ends up being the end user would be, you know, theoretically taking on liability if, if any exists in the future.
And you're saying that's the common practice across the state, Alan, is for HOAs to contract with the provider?
Just representing the company told us that they do have agreements throughout the state with, with other HOAs in that regard. So that there was some narrative that I was getting second, third hand that somehow they were demanding that the city had to be the end user, but that's not the case according to them.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That, that helps. And, Chris, I've been just talking with some of city staff about the city's Memorial Day celebration, just, you know, obviously, I know, important event for all of us. And so it sounds like the, the possibility, Chris, of, of having some type of a Memorial Day event at the, at the cemetery is, is, is likely. Is that your sense right now?
Yeah, that is correct. And I think we're going to start to see in the heels of Broward County's amendment of their order yesterday. I think we're going to see outside events quickly return to what we remember being normal. So there's no, there's no crowd requirement anymore, no, no crowd size requirement, no distance requirement for events outside in Broward County. So I think you'll start to see a lot of what we were, we were used to seeing outside come back.
So you can start performing weddings out each again, Commissioner.
It's about time. I've been waiting. Come on. Who are we going to marry? Are you going to be next, Mayor? Can I officiate at your wedding?
I'm holding that secret back.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Great. I think that is it. Yep, that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Just a couple of things. Tomorrow, not tomorrow, this weekend, we have Lauderdale Cares events. And every member of the Commission, as well as members through the community, are asked to participate. And there's a whole list of activities that anyone can do either on Saturday or Sunday. And I would encourage every member of the Commission to at least try to sign up for one of the things. There are quite a few. And I know I'll be, I'll be there as well. So, you know, do your best and let's all try to pitch in to help Fort Lauderdale more beautiful than it is today. Also, you all named a lot of the things that we attended. So I guess the thing that I want to talk about is a couple of issues. Maybe, Chris, can you talk a little bit about where things are with regard to our, our discussions with the Boring Company? What's happening? What's on your, on your schedule next?
Yeah, so obviously, they've been here and put some work into it. They have approached us again, ready to talk about a proposal for a project in Fort Lauderdale. We should have the benefit of, of seeing that and digesting it later this week. And so the communication has been very strong, very good, and, and continues. And they work at a pace much quicker than I think some of us are used to. So they, they turn stuff around in days, not weeks. And when they turn something around, they want to take it to the next step. So it's been a good dialogue. It, it continues. And hopefully by next week, I'll be able to update you all as to what I learned later this week.
Okay, great. Thank you. Let's see. Alan, do you want to give us a little bit of a, of a summary of what happened in the, in the recent court decision with regard to the gun preemption matter?
Sure. As you recall, the Circuit Court had rendered a, a very good opinion for the varying cities that had challenged Florida statute that one preamps local governments from enacting legislation regarding firearms and ammunition. But that in addition, when it was amended, I don't remember when, but added a variety of penalties against elected officials, officials, including city manager and municipalities, if any such law is passed in, in violation of that preemption. We had challenged that successfully. The Circuit Court had issued a very well reasoned opinion. The Attorney General, Ashley Moody, on behalf of the governor presumably, went ahead and appealed that. That decision this week came back and it was reversed on most issues. There were a couple of issues that actually were not appealed. One that dealt with the governmental entities proprietary and employment status when it comes to those regulations. I don't know how clear that is, but certainly it's something we can explore because it was not challenged. So that may be a remnant, a small morsel of victory we can hang on to currently.
proprietary interest, like if we own.
Correct.
On that property, that might be something that's been reserved in the cities?
Correct. So for example, we're not acting as the city of Fort Lauderdale, but we are acting as the owner of the property, as proprietor, same as an employer. If, if you want to preserve or render safety for your employees, we're acting as the employer, not as the governmental regulatory, regulatory agency. So that still needs to be vetted out, but that seems to have been preserved from the original opinion from the Circuit Court. The cities, from my understanding and conversations with various other city attorneys, are all on board with proceeding. Our only other avenue at this point is to seek review in the Florida Supreme Court. That's purely discretionary. They don't have to take the appeal. So it's called a petition for writ of certiorari. We filed that with the Florida Supreme Court. And if they choose to take jurisdiction over the matter, partly, as we will argue, as a matter of great public importance, then they may decide the issue or just decide not to take it. It was my intention of bringing this to you during this conference meeting because we have been asked to obviously proceed in that fashion. The cost for us would only be nine hundred dollars, which I think is well worth the challenge. And it should be taken up further. And if the commission agrees by majority, then I can go ahead and proceed with that.
Okay, so I put it out to the commission. I personally would encourage the city manager, excuse me, the city attorney to participate in that appeal. Does anyone have a comment on that?
I agree. I agree.
Anybody else?
That's a majority.
A consensus, a majority.
No, that's a majority.
Majority, not consensus.
That's what I said. It's a majority.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Boalow, we're encouraging you to move forward on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, you may have read recently in the newspaper how the demand for vaccinations is starting to diminish. And that's not a good sign, especially at a time when the infection rate continues to increase and hospitalization rates continue to increase. I would, I don't expect, you know, any kind of response tonight or this afternoon, but we really need to think of ways to try to push people within our community to try to, you know, consider getting vaccinated. I understand that there are people that have, you know, personal, medical, religious feelings about this, that, you know, they don't want to be vaccinated. But it's really, really important now that we have the vaccination. Helps to protect them as well as everybody else. So it's not a good sign when the demand has been so significantly reduced. So, you know, I reach out to each member of this commission to try to come up with ways. Just go out in your own, in your own districts and see what you can to, you know, to try to excite interest in, in really taking advantage of this wonderful opportunity. And I guess that's it. Anyone else have anything else?
Mayor, I have one other thing.
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Alan, Chris, we've, you and I have talked about this, but Mayor, one of the things I've talked to Chris and Alan about is our sound ordinance. I get a huge number of complaints about sound, you know, music and so forth.
You have a noisy district.
Very vociferous, very exuberant district. So, so Mayor, I asked Alan and Chris to, to take a look at our sound ordinance. I'm, it, it probably hasn't been updated or reviewed in a long, long time. There's new technology. I mean, there's, there's a whole host of, of things that is worth kind of looking at. So I just wanted to, to check in with Alan and Chris on that, I think, for maybe progress or steps for that.
Still driven at the staff level. We've got a group that's looking at it and doing some research as to what others are doing. It might be more current in their, in their code. So we're doing that now, and then we'll involve the city attorney's office, obviously, before we come back and make a recommendation to, to the commission.
Yep, perfect. Yeah, all right.
I think, Ben, I really, I appreciate what you're saying and to be serious about it. You know, as we continue to grow as a city and as downtown becomes more dense, the mixed use concept means both residential as well as entertainment is all going to take place, you know, within, within earshot. And it, we're starting to see the results of our success in building a new downtown. And it's impacting the residents in a negative way in some cases, who are suffering from noise from some of the new places that are opening up. And there, there has to be a way for us to, to reach some measure of accommodation so that the folks that live downtown are not burdened by all the excitement and the excess noise that some of the new amenities are bringing to the area. So I'm, I'm with you. Whether it be identifying the levels of, of, the decibel levels that need to be adjusted or whether it be just the mechanics of trying to measure decibel levels. And I think that we really need to focus on it. Because, hey, you know, it, it's really interesting. I was having lunch on La Solas Boulevard Saturday. And, I mean, it was just a stream of cars, one after another, everyone revving their engines and, you know. I don't know, it must have been Lamborghini day in Fort Lauderdale or something. I mean, there was just one after another. And you can't go more than twenty, maybe ten miles an hour on La Solas in most days. So what do you do with a car that, you know, that can go up to three hundred miles an hour? Well, you, you put it in neutral and you rev the engine. And, and it just seems to be a lot of, you know, need to make a lot of noise. And I just think that we, we need to think about how we can, how noise pollution needs to be really addressed in a, in a very systematic and scientific way. So I'm with you. I think it's really important.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And, and Mayor, I know you feel the same way. I don't see this as punitive. I see this as, this is a way we can, like the tree ordinance. How can we really get the latest improvement to do, you know, make, make the best, best use of, and make our city the best it can be by, by addressing this fully? So, and, and speaking of which, Mayor, the gas, the leaf blowers. What, I think Commissioner McKenzie is helping lead. I just wanted to see where we are on that.
And what was that?
The leaf, the leaf blower. Yeah, just, just want to get a sense of that. What happens next or, Commissioner?
We put out, I believe the city manager's office reached out to the community through a, through a survey.
So we gathered some information, but Commissioner McKenzie is, is, is leading that process now with a smaller sub, smaller committee working on it. So why don't we turn it over to the Commissioner?
McKenzie, is there anything to report on this?
There's actually nothing to report just yet. We have, we established the, the working group. It's a committee of four, including myself. We're gonna kind of look at what we talked about as a commission. We know it was a four one against outlawing the leaf blowers. And we, we got. And we got folks from Las, Las Olas, we got folks from the landscape industry who were at the meeting that spoke, that got our attention to, to stop us from banning them. And now we're gonna come up with some nuts and bolts that we can present back to a community group at that time. We just thought, I think staff jumped ahead of us and they went out and did a survey. And you got like, you know, 69 people saying they want to be on a committee. That's just too many people to be on a committee with. But we're going to come back and present to the public and to the commission where we are in terms of tweaking what we have on the books since there was a vote not to ban. And I guess we're just to be the eyes and ears of if we're still having bad behavior in the industry. And in most cases where our, our code department has gone out and issued tickets and what have you. Let's ban the non-licensed landscapers. It's the homeowner who's blowing, you know, leaves into, into the wrong direction. So we're going to take a look at all of that, come back and so we can have a full discussion both publicly and with the commission and make sure that we're doing the right thing based on what we gave directive from a commission perspective.
So is that, are the survey results going to go to that committee first and then come to us, Chris? Or is that going to come, how are we going to do that?
I'd anticipate once there's a recommendation to be made that we probably schedule it for a conference meeting. And then absent another process, you know, as a, by way of an update, and then it would come forward to.
Okay, so when might be scheduled that?
We will be meeting, we will be meeting this month. And after we meet, we're going to go back and address the surveys. We're going to go back and address some public comments. Then we're going to come back and say we're ready to come back to the question and, and present what we have to strengthen any ordinances that we have on the books or not do anything if that's the feedback that we're getting. We don't know yet because the verdict's not in. Only thing we do know is that we voted not to ban. And then we put this committed together to look at, you know, what's really going on and come back with, with the presentation. So we're probably a month out, maybe.
All right.
Commissioner McKenzie, I have one piece of information. I'm sorry, I actually had on my report. I forgot to mention it. I actually had lunch on Wednesday with a company that relocated to Fort Lauderdale. They're on Las Olas, TTI. I don't know if you all have heard of them. They came from Baltimore and they're here. They're an international company. He happens to live in my district and they are actually the leading producers of battery operated commercially commercial products like leaf blowers, lawnmowers, all that stuff. So we actually had the leaf blower conversation. I asked to, you know, to see if we can get a demo of it. They do have demos in their store and he, he assured me the price was the same. The price point was the same as the commercial gas operated leaf blowers, but they're very quiet. Can I maybe ask my staff to get you their contact information? Would you maybe see if your committee wants to talk to them and see if.
We have, we have, they, these, these folks who are in the landscape industry have looked at the option of battery operated. And when we come back, we're going to have a full blown presentation for you all to look at again. But there were, you know, some things that we did talk about like noise that, you know, that we wanted to go back and look at. And you can send that information to me. We're going to look at it and we're going to come back with a full report that we can, you know, look at as a commission. And talk about what we're doing to, to make sure that people are, are using leaf blowers in a responsible manner.
But Vice Mayor, I'm just interested, what, what's the battery length of, on those?
They make these batteries. I wish I had someone here to kind of give us an, give us an update.
Vice Mayor? No, what I'm saying is I don't think we all have enough information as laypeople. The committee I'm working with are the people that work in the industry. We're going to come back with all avenues vetted and maybe we'll give you guys a demonstration at that time. But to try to, you know, figure out the life of it, I mean, I have a battery powered in my house. It does give me the power, the power I need, but it alleviates the extension cord. So when you talk about doing hundreds of yards a day with a landscaper, you know, how would this impact the industry? And because I have two of those people in the room, they're going to come back with the presentations. And this is good information she's giving me. So now we can have the battery tested, you know, and bring that back to the commission so that we all feel comfortable with what, with what we did in terms of banning leaf blowers. But the committee is there to gather the information and take on the questions you're asking right now, Commissioner and Vice Mayor.
Right. And, and Ben, it wasn't necessarily, the lunch wasn't about leaf blowers. We just happen to be, you know, I was learning more about their company. They make batteries for everything around the world that uses this battery technology. Apparently it's pretty advanced.
Yeah, it's like it lasts most, most of the day, huh? The battery technology now?
I, it seemed like it was, it would seem like it was pretty easy. So I'll connect McKenzie's group with, with this company. It's TTI and it's on Las Olas and they do have a showroom if we want to go play with some tools. So they've invited us. So I'll make that connection.
What's that again?
Let's go. We'll public notice it and we'll go there.
All right. The thing is, keep in mind, this was a two, two-pronged issue. One was noise and one was bad behavior. And I brought it up. Yeah.
Oh, you've been bringing that up since we've been here.
It's going to be difficult.
No, but what we want to do seriously, Mayor, we really want to look at it and make sure we address the issues that this commission brought up and come back with some good information for you.
Perfect. Very good. All right. So there'd be nothing more. Now we'll move on to the rest of the conference meeting, which would involve the public. But before I do that, I just want to read this. As you all know, the city of Fort Lauderdale is conducting its meeting both in person and in virtual format. And if you want to speak to sign up for any of the items that are on the agenda, I invite you to go to the following website. It's bit, B I T dot L Y forward slash virtual C C meetings. That's bit dot L Y forward slash virtual C C meetings. To help ensure decorum, we ask that you please abide by the following guidelines. Please refrain from any behavior that is disruptive, destructive, profane, or inhibits the meeting in any way. And while you are on the phone waiting for your opportunity to speak, please mute the method in which you are listening to the broadcast. And, and I will call upon you when it is your turn to speak and also notify you when your time has expired. City staff has automatically added speakers into listen only mode and you will be unmuted to speak when recognized. Once you have completed speaking, you will be muted and may either hang up to exit the meeting or stay connected to listen to the remainder of the meeting. Okay, having said that, move on to communications. We have a communication. Our first one is from the Sustainability Advisory Board. We have some people who signed up to speak, but I'm not sure which, it doesn't indicate for which one. So Leanne, which one are you here on? The what? Which, which, which advisory board? Parks, okay. So the first one is the Sustainability Advisory Board, which I'm not sure. Okay, here it is. Motion was made by Ms. Adler and seconded by Ms. Maza to advance the above communications to the city commission with the condition that staff submit the communication for the same date that the city's carbon footprint policy recommendations cam reaches the commission. It's a long communication. Is anyone here from the Sustainability Advisory Board?
Probably Glenn.
Yes, hi. Glenn Hadwin, Sustainability Manager with the Public Works Sustainability Division. And actually the stipulation you just read, originally we were going to come today with a presentation for commission on the policies with some more detail. And now that has been scheduled for May 4th. So we had a little bookkeeping issue, but.
All right. So this all has to do with, with policies and procedures that are going to be advanced and recommended to the city commission to try to reduce the carbon footprint and reduce greenhouse gas emissions within city, city operations?
Exactly. And we will be providing more detail in a presentation on, at the May 4th conference meeting.
So Glenn, do you want us to carry this communication forward to the May 4th meeting and publish it again?
Yes, please.
Same time as your.
Yes.
Agenda item. We can do that, Mayor.
Okay, great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is a communication from the Board of Adjustment. And this is a motion that was made to request the city commission to consider moving the Board of Adjustment meeting from 6:30 PM to 6:00 PM. Does that need our approval?
It's appropriate for you to do that since it's their regular time and it's going to be consistent, a consistent change. It does technically affect city function. So it would be appropriate for the city commission to authorize that.
All right. So how do we get that on the, on the agenda for?
You could, I mean, it doesn't have to be necessarily a formal vote, but there should be, again, agreement by the commission with that to occur. They have the authority to change the time, but the city commission should speak on it because it does affect the city function.
All right. Does anyone on the commission have an objection to the Board of Adjustment meeting at 6:00 PM rather than 6:30 PM when they have their meetings?
No.
Sounds good.
Is that a consensus?
Oh, but it's a majority. Actually, it is a consensus. Don't be, don't be a smart butt python.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Beautiful.
All right. Wow, we're moving right along here. Okay. Also, I have Justin Klecha, Klecha, who signed up to speak. I'm not sure on what item. He's appearing virtually. The last issue we have is the is from the Parks, Recreation and Beaches Advisory Board. Is Mr. Klecha from South Miami? Signed up to speak.
Do not see that name there.
You don't see the name? He may have signed up to speak with regard to whether or not to consider the resolution concerning the transgender issue because he's from Save. And I'm thinking maybe he didn't know which item to sign up for. All right. So we have the Parks, Recreation and Beaches Advisory Board item. And this was a not quite sure. There's a motion. Motion was made by Charlie and seconded by Mary in support of the proposed Phase One projects moving forward to the next stage. And then it says a motion was made by Carrie, seconded by Alex, that the board recommends the city commission honors the city's downtown master plan and turn the one-stop shop property into a public park. Leanne Barber, are you here to speak on that?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks, thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Parks Board Communication of the Commission. We at the Flagler Village Civic Association, where I'm the president, we're thrilled to hear about the unanimous support for honoring the city's downtown master plan and turning the one-stop shop into a public park. The Civic Association has made our position known to the city manager and the commission. And we recently wrote a letter that asks that all information regarding the P3 be released to the public. We have also asked for the opportunity to review the site plan and we have not received any information from the developer, damn good hospitality. Anyway, I guess we, in our letter, we've said in the sad event that you do agree to move forward with this project with damn good hospitality. We ask that you segment the parcel into land for their cultural venue and segregate land for the park and that you turn the park land over to the city of Fort Lauderdale Parks and Recs Department so that they would be able to design it. And I've given, you know, the letter that you should have received gives a lot of other specifications about the, the concerns that we have for this P3. So, but I don't need to go through it in detail here, I don't think.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions of Leanne? Okay, thank you, Leanne. Thank you so much. Okay, those are the communications. We'll continue moving forward. Business one, commercial filming in Fort Lauderdale. Mr. City Manager.
So Mayor, commission back in February, the commission asked for a summary report of what it takes to get a permit to do a commercial filming in Fort Lauderdale, a little bit about the process. And this presentation from Sarah Spurlock is a result of that request. So I'll turn it over to her and we'll go from there.
Go ahead.
Presentation's up. Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Hannah Spurlock. I'm the city's nighttime economy manager. As Chris mentioned, Commissioner Sorenson earlier this year asked about the film permitting process. So I've just put together a few slides to explain our current process in, for commercial filming in Fort Lauderdale. I'm sorry. Oh. Okay. Okay, current process. So right now, we, all commercial filming requires a permit. So that's whether it's photography, filming video, if it's for commercial purposes, we require a permit. The permitting is done through Broward County. The applications are processed through the film office at the county's Convention and Visitors Bureau. After the production company completes the application and submits the documents, the film office with the CVB forwards it to the relevant city employees. And, and they, again, the CVB does it for all cities in Broward County. So it's a one-stop shop. Once all the stakeholders in the city review and approve the application, the city's nighttime economy manager, myself, signs the permit and returns it to the film office. And then that's given to the production company and they know they can move forward with filming. So what's in the application? We, they include their, the production company name, their contact information, the name of the production, the budget, scene information, cast and crew info. That would be like numbers of cast and crew, date, time and location of production. They've asked for the hotel accommodations for the cast and crew if applicable, indemnity and insurance information and parking and street closure info. What else is required? The production company must complete and submit a certificate of insurance, I think that, yeah, which provides at least a million dollars of comprehensive general liability and names the city as an additional insured. We've also required for about three years now that a letter of authorization from an officer of the production company stating that the employee signing the permit on their behalf is authorized to do so. If the production occurs in a residential neighborhood, on the beach or a few other select places in town, we've asked that they hire police detail to manage mobility and safety concerns. We ask the production company to notify neighbors in the surrounding areas if it's being done in a residential area. Okay, that's the end of my presentation.
I'm not sure that we got to that last slide that was just.
Is there another slide?
It may not be material to the presentation.
Yes, it is. Yes, that's it. Sorry. I forgot there was, there is another page. Okay, if police detail is required, a hold harmless for the use of police vehicle and equipment must be submitted. If they are filming on a state road such as A1A, they must get approval from FDOT. If they plan to close a street or a block or a right of way for more than just a few minutes at a time, they have to get an MOT, just like any other street closure. Any filming on city property such as a park, the beach, the airport, a city parking lot has, we, they must get approval from the respective department. And the, the production company must pay for any metered city parking that they use for their own vehicles or, or equipment. Okay, now that's, now it's over.
And so I guess the context in which we brought the presentation was to talk through what our process was. There for a period of time earlier this year, I was getting some feedback that it was too much, too often, too frequent, especially in the residential areas. And, you know, I guess if we're seeking any feedback today, it's if, if you think that the process that we've outlined is satisfactory, albeit, and very admittedly, it's a very easy process to get through because Broward County, Fort Lauderdale, and many places around the United States for that matter, have become very film-friendly communities. They, they, they travel, they find places like Fort Lauderdale, a desirable place to do their filming. They typically come in, they bring money into our economy, and then they, they, they leave and, and leave really no footprint behind. So historically, the film industry has been a good industry to work with. That, I guess, you know, besides just being informational, if you have any feedback for us.
We have a few people sign up to speak.
Okay, great.
Why don't we, why don't we move over to them? And I'm gonna say three at a time, so people can be prepared. These are all online. And Sarah, if you don't mind staying there in case, you know, we need you to respond. Leah Sokolowski, David Wells, Peter Marquez. Is Leah on the line?
Leah's there and recognized and unmuted. Leah, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Ah, yes, we can. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner. Sarah, hello. For allowing me to speak here today. I, I really wanted to just kind of find out what the purpose of this particular agenda item is. I'm a location manager by trade, working here in South Florida, Broward County resident for close to 30 years, working in the industry here in South Florida. Wanted to find out if there was a specific incident that had sparked this again. We have this conversation every few years and, you know, wanted to see if there was a way to give input if things were going to change, find out what the Commission's purpose with this item is.
You want to find out what the purpose of this item is?
Yeah, and I had heard rumors through the grapevine that it was to possibly create a stricter film ordinance. Was it just an, is it just an informational agenda item?
Sarah, you want to speak to that?
Well, that's, I think that'd be a question more for Commissioner Sorenson. He, he asked that this be on, on the agenda as a possible, a possibility to discuss further restrictions. Right now, there isn't a film ordinance, so.
Well, first of all, let me just, let me just say this. The film industry has had an inconsistent history in the state of Florida with regard to the film industry and movie making in Florida. Many of the movie producers have fled to other states where Florida was once a great place to do filming. They've gone to places like Georgia and others, other places because it's cheaper and the state provides incentives. Florida, the Florida Legislature, I believe, has eliminated many of those incentives. And so now the question is, you know, do we want as a city to try to come up with a, a film ordinance that the film industry can rely on when they look to places like Fort Lauderdale as a venue to, to conduct filming? And is this something we want to encourage in our community? I believe the city manager gave an excellent report on the advantages of, of, of bringing the film industry here. But certainly, there needs to be some measure, some parameters, some boundaries that we need to establish in terms of, in terms of hours of operation, in terms of, you know, parking restrictions, and, and there's a whole list of things. And I think today it was just an opportunity for us to have a discussion as to where we want the city to go. Do we want to encourage filmmaking here in our city? And if so, you know, what approach are we going to be taking in order to allow the film industry to adapt its, its methods to what we have to offer here in Fort Lauderdale? Is that kind of what we're, what we're, what we're planning to do here?
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah, Mayor, and I'm happy to
Ben, yes, you want to add to?
Yeah, I'm happy to jump in. Yeah, so for me, it's, it's not an either or, it's, you know, I think you and I feel the same way as I, I want the film industry to be here in Fort Lauderdale. I want them to take advantage of our amazing city. And I want to ensure that in our residential areas, especially that we're, you know, respecting our neighbors and so forth. So we can do both, and that's what, you know, after we hear from the public, I've, I've some questions for Sarah around. Not so much the process that Sarah outlined, but some of the specificity in terms of timing, what's allowed, when, and so forth, and just, just improve some of the practices, I think, that'll not only make, make it, you know, more equitable and fair for neighbors, but also actually make it even better for the, for the film industry. So I think we can, we can get to some win-wins. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Leah?
It does, sir. And I would just love to raise my hand that if there's going to be further conversations with interested parties, I would love to give input and be part of that. My experience filming in Fort Lauderdale has been incredible. I've worked in many of the neighborhoods throughout the years on various projects, big and small. And I think I have a pretty good track record. I hope that's correct, Sarah. You know, I would, I would definitely love to advise and consent if possible. I think when you can get your neighborhoods involved in the process, the actual homeowners, if you're interested in protecting the homeowners, that's going to be super beneficial. I also, yeah.
All right, very good. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is David Wells on the line? David?
David is.
David, can you hear me? We can't hear you.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Ah, yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Yeah, it should be about two or three minutes. Good afternoon, Mayor Trentellus, Vice Mayor Moradis, Commissioner Sorenson, Plasman, Mackenzie. My name is David Wells. I'm a battalion chief with the City of Fort Lauderdale, 13 for the past 11 years. I've also been in the film and television business since 1984 in Fort Lauderdale. I began working in the industry on the first season of Miami Vice. Commissioner Sorenson reached out to me with an email, asking me kind of what my take is on a potential improvement in our process for the, for the city in film and TV. I own two businesses in the city. One is called Moving Picture Rental. We rent manpower and equipment all over North America. We're located in Fort Lauderdale, Fort Myers, and Orlando. I also own a production company called People First Media. We produce original content for Fortune 500 companies, networks, and advertising agencies. So the creation of a film ordinance needs careful consideration because it can quickly negatively affect our current competitive advantage. We have a great competitive advantage because we're so friendly to bring film and TV to our city. Our amazing film locations, like the locations in Rio Vista, are an asset for us in Fort Lauderdale, just like Inter Miami is. My company and other colleagues in the film industry have been working with David Beckham directly. And as a result of Inter Miami and Fort Lauderdale, we benefited very much so during the pandemic with him being here. These types of assets, locations in Rio Vista, for example, and Inter Miami, they're key to our success. And we have assets that drive business, and we do not want to mess any of that up. So from what I'm told and a little bit of investigation I've done, there's been very few complaints or maybe formal complaints in the past four years. That's all hearsay, but the data, I believe, must be reviewed to see at the time and effort of city staff and industry stakeholders is worth taking the time to create an ordinance. We went through this a couple of years ago, and it, it got shot down, and we didn't end up with an ordinance. I know of a few issues with two residences in 2020 in Rio Vista. And I looked into that just because I care. I had heard about it in the grapevine from a few stakeholders. One of the positive outcomes of this is that Christina Curry, now, who's the Rio Vista Civic Association, her friend, she receives notifications of all permits being issued from Sarah. And then she informs the members of Rio Vista that are on the email list, and they also put on their social media page that that a production is coming, this is when it's coming, and this is the, the house where it'll occur, the street's going to occur. So already, we had some positive outcome from that. We're informing residents, because one of the things that Ben mentioned, I think it's a very good idea, what they call in other cities, they call it papering, which you, a location person puts paperwork inside somebody's mailbox. So that's already happening. In fact, we're letting the entire neighborhood know what's going on, opposed to like a four-block radius. In terms of parking, that's always an issue. Rio Vista's been negatively affected with the sewer upgrades. We've never parked on swales in there. The crew parking has always been off-site in various places. And, and I believe that the detail officers provided by Lieutenant Stutters maybe could take a more active role and on that enforcement, making sure nobody's in the swales on the street. And they really should be maybe more interactive with location managers, et cetera, and the owners of the production company. Make sure these rules are, are being followed, because where we're at right now, it's a lot of it is good faith, right? And it, and it is working. And residents have been told by Christina Curry that those detail officers are there for their benefit. If they have an issue, they should approach that officer on the day of production, let them know. Noise, bullhorns of PA systems, I've never liked that.
David, you're three minutes up. We appreciate your input.
Can I have one more, one more final, final comment? I just believe overall more scrutiny and resources need to take place in the permitting process to vet what the production company is trying to accomplish. A lot of this is low impact, some of it's high impact, and that has to be vetted by the production office. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you for being part of this today. Peter Marquez, followed by Christina La Buzetta from Miami Beach, and, and Jamil Gonzalez, also from Miami. And Peter Marquez from Keybus Cane. I guess you brought a lot of attention, Sarah, to this issue. Is, is Peter, is Peter on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have three minutes.
Great, yes. I just, my name is Peter Marquez. I'm a location scout and manager for commercials and movies and music videos. And I just wanted to say hello to everyone present. And just want to give you a little bit of background about what we do when we go into a neighborhood like Rio Vista. You know, it is common practice for location managers to notify the, the neighbors that are within, I believe it's 500 feet of, of the filming site. And, you know, we, so we, we do a good job in letting the neighborhood know, you know, what is happening in advance so that, you know, residents are on board with us and, and are not surprised, you know, to see a film production taking place in their neighborhood. We also, you know, we're, we're very mindful mostly of, of putting all of our vehicles in driveways. We pay residents to park, to park on their driveways rather than have any presence on the street. And like Mr. Wells said, you know, we are pretty much, we, we self-govern ourselves. We, we, we all are very mindful to not affect the community negatively. And, you know, unfortunately, it's just, sometimes it's one bad apple that, you know, kind of causes a whole storm to happen. And, and this whole thing of more ordinances and more regulation to, to take place. But by and large, I think that we are, we're, the professionals that are doing this are, are very mindful of being invited back. This is how we make a living, you know, having neighborhoods and communities invite us back and be, and welcome us into, into their, into their communities. So I just want to let you know, you know, just basically that, you know, we, we do sort of watch out for ourselves and make sure that, you know, we're all, we're all on our best behaviors and, and not basically causing a disruption to the community or having the least amount of impact to normal, you know, day-to-day life in the communities. And that's basically
All right, well, great, and I really appreciate your, your suggestions. And somehow, I guess, Rio Vista seems to be a hot place for filming. Okay, Christina La Buzetta, followed by Jamil Gonzalez, followed by Andrew Nathanson. Christine, are you there? Christina?
She was. And then she disappeared. Why don't you move to Jamil?
Jamil Gonzalez is there. Jamil, I saw you there for a second.
Yep, I'm here, actually. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have three minutes.
Excellent. First off, thank you, everyone, for hosting this and for giving us an opportunity to speak about this subject. I also echo the sentiments of Peter, Leah before me as well, and Mr. Wells about, you know, I think that there are sometimes misgivings with the film community. The majority of us, the vast majority of us, for starters, either live in the areas, work in the areas, or have family that live in the areas, which is part of the reason why we love Rio Vista. It's a beautiful, classic, simple neighborhood. Also, the other thing as well is we like to be most respectful of everyone in the neighborhood. That is one of my mottos. Everyone else lives there 365 days out of the year. I am privileged and always honored that we're invited guests, whether it's for one day or a few days. So we definitely don't like to sort of leave this taste that we run amok in a neighborhood. And I do understand, I think someone else had prefaced this earlier, that there have been inconsistencies with the film, you know, communities. I would like to sort of take a moment to rectify that and say that production companies may be one thing, no different than any other company, that is always looking for some type of handout or incentive. In this particular case, I would like to say that it's kind of a moot point. I don't really understand how that bears merits in our capacities and wanted to work in these neighborhoods, seeing that we consistently work in these neighborhoods, usually without any issue and without any complaints, as was said before. Because we do work closely with our film offices, we want to make sure that everything is not only buttoned up, but done correctly. No parking on swales, renting driveways when or if needed, parking, you know, the majority of everything off-site. And, you know, essentially just making sure that we're as compliant as possible, also not entering a neighborhood too early or leaving too late, you know, without trying to make some sort of prior approval with either the city or with residents. With that said, I would also like to echo Leah's sentiments that if there is any potential changes in the future, we'd like to be privy to it. I, myself, would like to also possibly put my input, seeing that I used to work for the film and television office also in the City of Miami. So I'm very, you know, buttoned up when it comes especially to any types of regulations, everything from noise ordinance, you know, the size of, you know, certain equipment that we could bring, generators, et cetera, all of that type of items.
All right, well, great.
Mayor, can I ask Jamil a question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, sure.
Thanks, Mayor. Jamil, thanks for, thanks for your input. What time in the morning do you think productions should be allowed to start?
That would always depend, and I'll say this, this always depends as well by how populated certain, you know, neighborhoods are. I believe your current guidelines are either 7:00 or 7:30 AM. And by the way, I'm talking about the first even vehicle entering a neighborhood.
Yeah.
And I think it's normally, I believe, currently till 10:00 PM. I'm not too privy on your current guidelines on the weekends, if that changes any. Because I know in certain neighborhoods like Coral Gables, that changes a bit, you know, if it's a Sunday, things have to generally start a little later and end a little earlier, because obviously the next morning, you know, is, is Monday, so we try to not be as impactful. But I would normally say that it should just be whatever the current ordinance is that is on file. Anything that needs to go past that, that I understand if it needs to go towards some sort of review, either with a homeowners association or the city, or perhaps neighbors, you know?
So, okay. Whatever is on the books aside, what do you think the right operating time is in a residential neighborhood?
My honest opinion would probably be no, earlier than 7:00 or 7:30, which is usually going to be close to sunrise. And again, I want to stress, that would be the first even person arriving into a neighborhood. I'm not talking about, hey, we're already here filming, we're ready to go. I'm talking about the first piece of equipment. And probably the latest would be between 9:00 and 10:00 PM.
Okay, that helps. Thank you, Jamil.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other questions of this gentleman? Okay, there being none. Thank you, sir. Christina La Buzetta, is she there?
Haven't seen her come back, Mayor.
She's not come back?
Have not.
Okay, and then lastly, Andrew Nathanson. Andrew, are you there?
Andrew is here.
I am here. I am here. I just had to get unmuted. So first of all, I'm going to pick up where you were talking about hours. Sometimes the productions do want to stay later or come in a little earlier, and usually they are able to work things out with neighbors in the area so that they know in advance, and it's not a surprise. So that's one thing to consider. Like Camille, I spent half a decade long ago working for the Miami-Dade County Film Commission. Sorry, my phone's going off. I spent half a decade working for the Miami-Dade Film Commission, so I understand both sides of the permitting process. I work as a producer and location manager, and I live in Aventura halfway between Miami and Fort Lauderdale. And when people ask me, you know, what they're looking for, I'll say, if you want to go the easy way, Fort Lauderdale is very efficient. What I want to talk about is more of a 30,000-foot view from a macro perspective. And since permitting is done through the CVB, I did submit a presentation I did some years ago that ties film into tourism. So I'm going to suggest that everybody, if they haven't thought about it or delved into very deep, that they do consider that because it's not just the money that they bring here and the jobs and the clean footprint. There's also a roughly 2.2 multiplier effect. Because it's not just the money that they bring here and the jobs and the clean footprint, there's also a roughly 2.2 multiplier effect. Um they do take hotels and rental cars and restaurants and contribute to businesses in the community as well. So it's not just tourism, but also the community businesses that get contributions to from business that's done, whether it's cleaners or supermarket or what have you. Um what I can tell you, and it was mentioned by somebody, is how uh our state incentives are gone and Georgia's cleaning our clock. Um there was a movie that was set in Ebor City that was shot in Georgia. Uh and if you look at Dolphin Tale, which was shot in Northwest Florida, they saw a huge boom in tourism. So that's something to be considered because the exposure, if you consider the airtime that's bought, um it's priceless. You know, if you see a TV show, that's like a 30 minute commercial for the community. So please keep that in mind. If you do put sort of tight restrictions on filming, that word will get out. And the community in L.A. and New York is very small and they'll talk about it. So you really don't want to send that negative message. Because they they don't know the difference between Broward County and Fort Lauderdale and Miami and Miami Dade and Miami Beach. It's just Florida overall in general. We know, um you know, we know the difference between Kendall or Sunrise or Fort Lauderdale. But they don't understand that until they get here and they're uh have boots on the ground. Basically, South Florida is a brand. Um they spend a lot of money. They give us positive exposure. They bring tourism, that's well documented as well. And so that's something that I wanted everybody to think about. Um as well, like Camille, I'll be glad to work as a sounding board for everybody, um based on my experience at the Miami-Dade County Film Commission. And that's what I've got to say. Anybody have any questions?
I actually do, Mayor, if that's possible.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um I'd actually like to continue that conversation about the incentives and when you mentioned about Georgia cleaning our clock. Because um what I recently read also is uh Will Smith just uh withdrew his production um from Georgia because of his disagreement with some of the voter. Like the voter um legislation that went into effect in Georgia with regards to restricting folks' access to the ballot. Do you think that it's possible, and I I followed the the bills in Florida in Tallahassee and they die every year. They just can't seem to come to an agreement on how we can as a state offer incentives. The old way they didn't like, and then they offered this year, I thought, kind of an interesting reimbursement approach to it. And I thought that might, you know, get some legs and it did not. Do you think it's possible that a city like Fort Lauderdale could actually take the lead? Look at some of the legislation that's been proposed in uh in Tallahassee and maybe just run with it ourselves if we so desired as a commission to see that kind of activity. Because I do know that as a state, we've probably lost millions, if not billions, to states like Georgia over the last five, 10 years. Because of our inactivity and any kind of incentives for the film industry. What are your thoughts about that?
Uh you're definitely right on the numbers. We've probably lost hundreds of millions of dollars in business, if not into the billions, like you said. Um I know for a fact that uh the city can take a lead. Um you may want to speak to the Miami-Dade County Film Commissioner Sandy Leiderman. Because she worked very hard and diligently to set up um some small incentives uh for Miami-Dade County. And it does resonate in a positive way. Um so it is possible to set up local incentives, um both for the city and then also with Broward County. Um the the big thing is that what they have done in the past that worked very well is they were tax credits. So it was after tax dollars were spent, then they get the credit after the fact. Um I'm not totally in-depth first with that, but my understanding is that um it was not an outlay. It was after taxes were paid, then they get a credit on future taxes. Um now, if the various municipalities are able to um sort of apply some sort of sort of political leverage and get that to work. Um you know, maybe something that there could be coordination with other areas of the state, Tampa, Orlando, Jacksonville, even some of the smaller counties. Because they'll go into places that are not as well developed if they need to see that's in the forest or what have you. You're not going to shoot that in South Florida. You're going to have to go into the middle of Florida. Um and I know that I sent um a project with Sean Connery back in the day when I was at the Film Commission to my alma mater, the University of Florida. Because they needed a college look with, you know, the vine clad red brick walls and whatnot. And it it did well. It brought a chunk of business and exposure to Gainesville. So, yeah, you know, and I'll be glad to get involved with that if if you need some input.
No, and I appreciate that. I I I think, you know, Chris and Sarah, it's it's worth looking. I remember years ago, even the county as a whole was much more aggressive. I remember Elizabeth Wentworth, I think, used to head the office and. Um the county used to do more. Maybe that's because at that time the state used to do more, but then maybe when the state dropped off, the county dropped off. But I I think it's a uh worthwhile discussion to have going forward and certainly in terms of if we're looking at ways to to increase revenues for the city. Um I just think it's it's worth that effort. I do as a discussion at least to see where it it could take us. But thank you for your, thank you for your input on that.
Yeah, real quickly, um I just wanted to say Elizabeth Wentworth was a rock star. She was absolutely fabulous um at her job representing the community. Uh and also Kristin Narona did a fine job dealing with all the permitting and whatnot. She's still there, I believe. So she can also be a resource for you guys and gals.
All right. Well, thank you, Chris and Sarah. I I again, I think it's worth pursuing and at least gathering some information and seeing what we could do. Um but again, thanks. I I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Um so let me just ask a question. Um but um did you have anything else you wanted to add to your presentation, Mr. Nathanson?
Well, actually, I did attach the presentation that had to do with film and tourism. So that's in the email to you guys. Um I could go on ad infinitum, but I think I pretty much covered it from a macro perspective.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
We do also, Mr. Mayor, now have Christina on the.
All right, before she says something.
Okay.
Does the county, the county has a whole department and do they preempt any of the stuff that we would try to do in terms of regulation? We still have.
If I could, I can comment.
Sarah, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, so the, like I said, the film office is with the C V B. Uh however, with the cuts that they had to make due to the pandemic, the film office was slashed. Um so the Kristen, as you, as you mentioned, is still with the C V B, but she's not in the film office. And they've got new staff uh in the film office and they are, they are overwhelmed. Um I do know that Mayor Geller has been talking a lot about film, the building up the film industry in the county. And I and I think there's actually an ad hoc committee that's been meeting regarding it. They they haven't consulted with me or talked with me about it, but that's what I've heard essentially through the grapevine.
Okay, I thought I had thought that they had like the county, not through the C V B, but within the county administration, there was a film.
And I think that's what the mayor wants to do again.
Uh Mayor Geller, yeah. Okay, uh you have Christina La Buzetta on?
We do.
Christina, are you there? Christina?
And not again. Well, maybe. She keeps coming on and off. She's recognized at this point.
Does she have a weak internet?
Christina star six, please, to unmute.
Last call. All right, let's move on. Okay, so um if I could ask the uh commission, um do we have a consensus or a majority interest in asking our staff to move forward? And coming up with some sort of parameters uh to provide the film industry as well as our neighbors uh with guidelines? That that everyone can anticipate if uh if uh a production company decides to use Fort Lauderdale as a uh as a venue for filming. Whether it be a commercial, a movie or whatever it may be. Um is that something we want to move forward on?
I just have a couple of questions too, Mayor.
Yes.
Uh so when you say guidelines, you mean an ordinance or just means guidelines?
We have guidelines right now, Mayor.
Okay, so we have guidelines and we're talking about an ordinance. I would just be hesitant to overregulate or have these as burdensome, you know, uh regulations. I want us to be known as a good place to do business and obviously promote tourism, like one of, um believe Andrew was saying. So uh but at the same time, you know, Ben, I know you have a lot of issues in your district, so I want to be very sensitive to your neighbors. I think I heard some best practices that was that you all are doing down in Rio Vista. You know, letting the neighbors know, off-site crew parking, um the detail, you know, working with the neighbors. Those are operational, you know, maybe talking about the best time to start. I I heard, Ben, you know, you're a little concerned, maybe 7:30 is too early to start loading in on a Saturday morning or whatever day. So I think we can still keep talking about best practices. And then if you feel like we need to get to the point where we need an ordinance, you know, I'll probably let you take the lead on that. I just wouldn't want to be over burdensome with regulations.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Uh thanks, Vice Mayor. And and Mayor, so we we already have some kind of guidelines and and I don't think we need to over legislate. I'd I'd just like to kind of um possibly make some little adjustments to the uh guidelines that again, I think are going to help the in film industry even be more kind of appreciated. Uh and and this idea of trying to do more to incentivize the film industry here, I think makes all the sense in the world. So um if it's all right with you, Mayor, I'd just like to ask Sarah a couple of questions and see, see kind of where we are on some of the specifics.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So Sarah, one of the things we've talked about is starting times. Currently, uh the the permissible start time in a residential neighborhood i- is what time?
We we with regards to hours, I don't, we don't have a specific time that they can start and stop. Uh we we look at the circumstances. So uh often it's, you know, between nine and nine a.m. and 10:00 p.m. Sometimes it might be eight a.m. Um often they might put on their permit is really early, but that's just like a cushion for the crew to make sure that everyone's there on time. But they don't actually do any start um driving into the community until eight or nine a.m. Um I also kind of look at, you know, we can, we allow leaf blowers, I think, as early as seven or eight a.m. So depending on the day of the week, we I I kind of look at that. I I figure we're allowing leaf blowers. I don't know why we can't allow a production company. But um so it it it, there is nothing set in stone, but we ask a lot of questions. So if I look at, there's a crew of, you know, 100 people and they've got, you know, eight vehicles, major vehicles. Then I I ask some questions because that's going to make a lot more noise than a handheld camera uh with two crew members and a model. Um which is a lot of what I get, a lot of B-roll footage, a lot of handheld cameras with one or two crew. It's very few that have big crews. Um again, Rio Vista is a very popular neighborhood with production companies because the houses look all American and they're very pretty. And they look like they could be in Ohio, Boston, Los Angeles, or Fort Lauderdale. So they like to be in Rio Vista. And the Rio Vista neighbors are pretty familiar with it. Um and that's why we also have police officers to make sure that they are quiet, that they're not blocking traffic. Um that that sidewalks aren't blocked, driveways aren't blocked and so on. So I I would, I would hate again to overregulate. We we ask those questions and we try to make sure that there aren't any problems on a case by case basis.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Hey Commissioner, can I just say something? You know, the city, um you know, a number of years ago, uh had a robust uh uh activity, you know, in the film industry. And it really did get, there is always going to be outliers that are irresponsible. And the city cracked down significantly on the film industry coming here because they would, they would start very early, they would end very late. They were very disruptive, litter all over the place. Um and it became a, you know, very unpleasant experience. So uh I agree with Commissioner Maritis that we shouldn't overregulate. But at the same time, I think everyone's looking for some kind of a set of parameters that everyone can understand and live by, you know, going into these, into this uh into this practice. So um uh but so so I think to some extent, we need to define what those parameters are so that everybody understands what the rules are. Cause every community has those rules.
I agree.
Miami Dade, Beach, all those people.
Right.
I I I have, I have had productions where they wanted to shoot at midnight and there is a huge crew in a neighborhood and I told them no. Um just because in my opinion, that was, I, there was no reason for that. It was only going to be disruptive with commute to the neighborhood. Um it was probably going to violate some noise ordinances, because I also look at that.
Wasn't that in the cemetery?
Noise, no. I can't remember which neighborhood it was, but it, so I, the, we did take discretion and I and we rely a lot on the police officers. Um Lieutenant Studders has been over police detail for the film industry for years. And he knows all of these production companies very well and they all work very well with our officers. And uh we rely very heavily on them and they they do a great job for us, I think.
Right, so great. So I'd just like to kind of uh get some specifics down and it sounds like you're already doing this, Sarah. But I just want to kind of make sure that we're kind of all on the same page. So I think uh I think it'd be helpful, as you've already said, um nothing's starting before eight a.m. Okay, in residential neighborhoods, eight a.m., nothing before eight a.m. and ending by 10:00 p.m. Now, Sarah, on a case by case basis, I think, and and Mayor, I think if if a production company needs to start earlier, go later for some reason. I think that should definitely be considered and we should be open to to supporting that. But I think it'd be helpful for Sarah to bring that at minimum to the district commissioner, wherever that is. Um just for the possibility of expanded hours. So that's, that's one um component. Does that, does that make sense, Sarah?
Commissioner, we should let them come back to us with some ideas and a proposal. I don't think we want to mince the the details of the ordinance here. Uh I think, I think.
It's not an ordinance, Mayor. That's.
You don't think this is going to turn into an ordinance?
It's not an ordinance right now.
Right, I know that, but should it not be? Isn't that what the purpose of today's discussion is to give direction so that they can come back to us with an ordinance? Isn't that what, isn't that what this was about, Chris?
That would certainly be something we could pursue. I think what Commissioner Sorenson is doing is advancing some uh just some thoughts and ideas that would amend the guidelines that we currently have. We have guidelines today, those could obviously morph into an ordinance. Um or we could keep them as guidelines that we simply follow as we issue permits. We have more flexibility with that, of course, than if it becomes.
But the guidelines aren't enforceable. They're just.
Correct. That's correct. Yeah.
I, just my opinion, if I, if I might, uh because the film industry in Florida has suffered since the incentives were taken away. I would say 75, if not 80% of the film permits I sign are B-roll footage, uh you know, just very small productions. And if we can't, we're we're struggling even keeping those those types of productions. Um and I I I don't know that this is a time for regulation when we're struggling to keep films filming here in Florida anyway. Um we've done all right with the guidelines. We really have. Do we have a problem every now and then? But.
I don't need an ordinance.
Yeah.
At this time.
So these are guidelines that, who established these guidelines to begin with?
They they've been developed over the years, just be through trial and error.
But if they violate the guideline, we can't say, you know, you're out of here.
True. That's true.
Cause there's nothing to enforce that.
That's true. How however, if the, if they're doing something else as associated with the film production, like they're breaking some other ordinance. Like they're blocking the right of way or they're too loud. Um or or something that's we cover in a different part of the code, then we can address it. But we, but filming itself, no, we we don't have any regulatory authority.
Okay. Any additional thoughts, Commissioner Sorenson?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So.
Please go ahead.
If you want to, I I'd just like to share some, some things that I think could be helpful as guidelines. If if you want to look at moving that into ordinance, you know, happy to explore that. But just some other other guidelines I'd like. So Sarah, you got eight a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Do you think that's reasonable, Sarah, that timing?
I think, I think for the most part it is, yes.
Great.
And and if you're, and you're allowing for exception, or are you suggesting allowing for exceptions?
Allowing for exceptions. Yep, yep. With note, your discussion with the the district commissioner, whoever that might be, um in advance. Like a lot of times we're short fuse, Mayor, on these, so there's not a lot of time for um um, you know, advanced discussions and prep. But but uh I think just, just the district commissioner would be great. Second thing, Sarah, we've had some issues with, um and again, this is supported by all the film industry folks that I've talked to is no bullhorns. Um using walkie talkies instead. Is that reasonable, Sarah?
Yes, I think it is, absolutely.
Okay, great. Then I think uh Jamil, if I'm pronouncing his name right, but I might be wrong. Uh mentioned no parking on swales or sides of the street. Try to get all of that parking offsite. Uh or what, and again, Sarah, I know you're familiar with this, what a lot of companies do is they pay residents to park in their driveway, right? They use their driveway.
Yes.
So is that fair um expectation?
Yes, I mean, I I don't think that we allow parking in swales anyway, but um yeah, yeah.
We've just had issues in, in our neighborhood with that, uh, with production companies, but.
Okay.
Yeah. Right. Um, what's the, what's the current notice requirement for a, a specific area? Like if they're filming at, you know, one hundred Main Street, what's the notice?
That, that's probably where we have our biggest challenge. Usually these, these site scouts and these location managers, they have a very short window, um, to turn around. And we, at the C V B, they've encouraged them to apply, um, ten days in advance, which let me tell you, if I, if I ever got ten, ten days for a film production, that would be amazing. Um, but it's usually just a few days. And sometimes it's like they want it the next day and sometimes we can accommodate them and sometimes we can't. So it, it's very, very quick, usually two, three, four days maybe.
Yep. So I think, I mean, ideally, Sarah, and again, open to your feedback and thoughts, but you know, I, I, you know, two block radius of whatever the location is, some type of notice, even if it's the day before, day of papering, whatever. I think Jamil or whoever said, just, um, giving some, you know, paper warning.
When it's in a neighborhood as opposed to.
Exactly. When it's in a neighborhood. Exactly. Yep. Um, and then, uh, then lastly, Sarah, is, um, this, and I, and I think, um, this is, you're already either already doing or, or putting into place, just kind of tracking, having a database, tracking the permits and the location of the permits, just so that the end of the year, we can say, okay, let's take a look and see where, where the permits were issued or.
Okay. Yeah, I can do that.
Where the locations were and so forth to, as a, as a tool. So that's it, Mayor. Those were just some of the, I think, little improvements that would really make, uh, I think, make neighborhoods feel even more comfortable and supporting um, all, all the film industry and what's going on.
Mayor, I have one question for Sarah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Sarah, this came up at my pre-agenda meeting last evening. Um, there was some expertise in the room concerning the film industry. And, uh, it was mentioned that what seems to be missing from our guidelines and our process is something that's very common now, especially because of the situation we're in, but there's no mention at all of any, um, COVID safety measures. And it was brought to my attention that requiring that and making sure that's in our process and guidelines uh, would also be helpful to our local economy because that would involve local vendors and assisting in that situation. So considering the times that we're in, has there been any, any thought about adding those kinds of COVID safety measures to our process during this time?
Uh, a- a- absolutely. And I, and I, I should have put that on my slide presentation. Since the very beginning, uh, we've made it very clear and I even have them printed on their application that they will abide by all county COVID protocols and regulations. Um, we would enforce that as we would any situation regarding the county regulations. So they, they most definitely are asked to do that. And I asked them, like I said, to commit to that by writing it on their application. Um, and then we enforce just as we do, as code enforcement would enforce any other COVID protocols.
Okay, excellent. And, and not just even protocols, but I just wanted to make sure that even just any kind of safety measures in addition to protocols. But good, as long as all of that is brought to their attention and it's maybe not incumbent upon them to find out what all of those protocols and safety measures are, but maybe if we are specifically letting them know what that is so that, you know, the onus is not on them to find everything out on their own.
Absolutely. And that, that's what the, the film office does and, and they're the county anyway. But, and I've been on a couple of sites and they are very, uh, most, both the times that I have been on the sites, they are all very cognizant of wearing a mask. I don't know if it's because I was on the, I was on site, but they appear to be complying very well.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor. That's it for me.
Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions for any, anybody?
And Mayor, the feedback I'm getting from the folks who are on the call, uh, is very positive in terms of everything we've been discussing. So I think we're, we're, we're at a win-win, um, for where we're heading. Yeah.
Very good. Thanks, Sarah, so much. Um, okay. So no one else has asked to speak. So instead of moving on to the next item, I need to jump to business four because, uh, I think our police department needs to be somewhere soon. So, um, this is a discussion concerning motorcycle noise and traffic enforcement along A1A. And, uh, uh, who asked that this be brought to the agenda?
This was asked for, has been asked for in a couple of consecutive meetings. I'll just say right on the front end that I think, uh, the chief is going to focus his presentation on motorcycle noise and traffic enforcement. Uh, probably more appropriately in the entirety of the city. It, uh, it may have been our interpretation that, uh, there was questions about just A1A. But, uh, um, I'll just ask him to talk generally about motorcycle noise, traffic enforcement, uh, Assistant Chief Frank Sousa.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the commission. Um, this is an issue that's been brought up, uh, quite frequently and something that we began addressing and continue to address, not only in terms of along the barrier island, but throughout the city. Um, we've conducted several operational plans, uh, and tried to secure information via, through various social media sites to address the issues. I can confirm for you, since January, uh, some of these operational plans have included the issuance of over two thousand citations.
Two thousand?
Two thousand. Um, we, we've had some success, um, on some days, but then there's other days that we've had a large contingent of, of motor enforcement and officers where no one has shown up. It's something that, that's difficult to, to get the information along social media. We've reached out to some other agencies to see if they have any, uh, intelligence sources that we could utilize. Uh, in terms of the barrier island, obviously a lot of those complaints seem to subside during spring break because the contingency of officers that are out there during spring break. And it's, it's an issue that is citywide. Like the manager said, it's not just contained to the barrier island. Uh, we see them in all three districts and it, it's something that we've continued to focus our efforts on.
Okay. Does anyone, anyone have any questions, uh, of the chief? We have one person who signed up to speak, Chad McCrory. Chad, are you there?
Hello?
Hi, Chad.
Hi, how are you?
Good. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. I wanted to thank, uh, thank you for allowing me to comment, excuse me, on this matter. Uh, we live along A1A South, uh, or Seabreeze in the Central Beach area and our balcony sits directly on A1A. And the noise from mufflers, musics and other music and nuisances, including the loud crotch rockets riding on sidewalks makes it unbearable and intolerable, excuse me, intolerable to often enjoy the balcony, especially on the weekend evenings. Additionally, we can hear all of this through our hurricane grade sliders even when closed. As Commissioner Glassman can tell you, since I often forward videos to him, it is out of control. Around Casablanca Cafe in Sebastian Street, as you're heading on A1A South, the road opens up. And this is where I observe the speeding and noise as it becomes an open raceway. I've suggested that maybe police can station themselves at the corner of A1A South, Seabreeze and Castillo, which is directly behind the Ritz Carlton. In our seven plus years of living here full-time, the noise nuisance has never been so bad. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Um, you have any comments with regard to that? I mean, cause so far, when you say that you've done action plans, it's usually to anticipate large groups. But have you ever, you know, like you sometimes have radar devices for speeding? Have you ever thought of stationing, uh, police officers in certain locations?
We have done that, Mayor. I've attended several meetings through the Central Beach Alliance, Alliance with Bill Brown. I've spoken to Commissioner Glassman, uh, in reference to this issue and several residents along the beach. We did redirect our DUI unit for a period of three weeks along the barrier island to address some of the areas along Birch and what the citizen just indicated to address the, the very issues. And we did issue several citations as a result of that. Um, so it is something that we're very familiar with and, and I understand and sympathize with where he's coming from. But it's not a lack of effort.
Okay. Uh, I mean, we don't, I, I don't know what best practices are in terms of trying to, um, deflect this kind of conduct and activity on our beach or on A, or on US one, or really anywhere in the city, because it happens just about everywhere. But there are certain hotspots, I can tell you, um, that, uh, we see this, uh, happen frequently. And, uh, I guess what the community is wondering is from time to time, you know, just like we had Beach Place was a hotspot for illegal activity and we stationed police officers there. Now in terms of vehicular misbehavior, you know, is there using similar model to try to, you know, to, to discourage people from violating the rules of the road? That's all.
Yeah. And, and we'll continue to work with, with the city and, and the various homeowners groups. And, and trust me, I get all the complaints from, from all the homeowners since I'm in charge of operations.
I said you might too.
But that's okay. That's what we're here for. And, and like you said, uh, we, we are stationing officers in various positions throughout the city. And, and I think you and I could have a conversation of the hotspots and we're going to have the same ones at the forefront of our conversation. So we'll continue doing that. We've reached out to other agencies also to assist us in the, in traffic enforcement with some of our partners. And we've utilized, uh, the aerial unit from Broward Sheriff's Office. I've contacted the Florida Highway Patrol to assist. So we have, uh, thought of some outside the box measures, but it doesn't seem like the, the fines are deterring their activity.
Okay. Any questions of the, of the chief from?
Yeah, Mayor.
Go, go, go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay. Okay. No problem. Thanks. Yeah. Actually, I was going to ask the question and then Chief just said it. And he said, he doesn't see that the fines are deterring any of the activity, which is, you know, disheartening. Because then what is plan B? I mean, unless we just went, uh, these two thousand citations since January seems like a high number. Do we have to get even more aggressive than that? So Chief, what do you think will deter the activity? And by the way, I wanted to thank Chad for taking the time to testify today and also to please urge you, Chad, to keep sending in all those reports and the videos. And it's very important to have that, um, documentation. But we heard what Chad recommended in terms of some of those monitoring of the hotspots. But Chief, if, if the, if the citations and the fines aren't doing a thing, what will?
Well, I, I, I think we're still in a holding pattern with our court system because of COVID. So I do think the fines are eventually going to have an impact. But remember, the court system has been quite backlogged because of COVID and they're just restarting their operations. So there is a delay in reference to the citations being vetted through the court system. So I'm hopeful that that will have somewhat of an impact. The citations are not cheap. In terms of enforcement, we can continue our enforcement and, and continue addressing the hotspot areas as we have been. We've been out on the barrier island a number of times. We've been out in District Three, District Two. So we've been addressing the hotspots and along Sunrise Boulevard and when they're entering and exiting the city, be it Broward Boulevard or Sunrise Boulevard. Um, so I think we've done everything we can within our agency to, to thwart this issue. I, I understand the noise is a concern. Um, and all I can do is continue dedicating assets to it. And with the court system hoping, opening back up, hopefully we'll start seeing an impact on that. Because if they don't pay their fines, you're going to start seeing the criminal aspect of it with the suspended driver's licenses and, uh, additional violations that could occur.
All right. Well, we'll see where that goes. Thank you very much for your work on this. And I would say, yes, please keep up the effort. Um, until we see some, some improvement. So thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Chris, who's, who sets our fines? Who sets the, the, the fine amount?
I'll actually defer to.
That's, uh, Alan, uh, City Attorney. Um, that is all state regulated. We're actually preempted to enforce, uh, for, from enforcement with regards to, um, increasing fines, uh, changing noise regulations. It's fully preempted. So that's all by the state. It's under chapter three sixteen.
So if I'm hearing you right, Alan, so we can't, whatever our current fine amount is for running a stop sign or speeding, we can't increase whatever that fine is?
Nope. That's all state regulated.
Huh. And do they update, update that like annually or just amounts or?
Not to my knowledge. Uh, I don't know what their schedule is in that regard, but, um, we certainly have, uh, motor vehicles or we're, we're completely hands off.
Yeah. Interesting. Okay. I didn't know that. All right. Th- thank you, Alan.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
None for me. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on the commission have anything they'd like to add? All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck this afternoon. Okay. Uh, I appreciate the patience of people. Uh, move on to business two. Um, this is a Gridx zoning code, uh, software and smart three D, three D development projects module and update presentation. Hello, Mr. Battle.
Hello, Mayor. Um, hi, Mayor. Um, members of the commission, everyone in attendance. Uh, we have a brief presentation being brought to you this afternoon by the, uh, Zonar Gridx Corporation. Um, as you know, we entered to agreement with them back in twenty eighteen to purchase their software solution to visually display, um, zoning, redevelopment patterns, geographic information and to display projects across the Fort Lauderdale city landscape. They've added some upgrades to, um, the features that the citizens can view on the city of Fort Lauderdale's web, website, including, uh, visual, uh, visualization of projects in the three D mode. So, um, they're here to make that presentation. They're on the, on the line. Jason Doyle, the CEO of Gridx is on the, uh, call as well as Ella Parker, our, um, Division Manager for our Urban Design and Planning Division at Sustainable Development. I'll turn it over to them.
Okay. Who's on the line?
Yeah. Good afternoon, Mayor Trent Ellis. This is Jason Doyle, CEO of Gridx. Um.
How are you?
Doing well. How are you? Uh, hello, Vice Mayor Maratus, Commissioners Mackenzie Sorenson and Glassman. Uh, thank you guys for having us. Um, it's been a pleasure working with, uh, Ella and her group in Development Services. And, uh, as Al said, we're here to kind of present to you guys, uh, what's out there now and, and available for your citizens. Technology and the data's come a long ways. So I'm going to, uh, give a short presentation of, of some of the aspects of it. I am sharing my screen. I don't know. Um, can you confirm that you all are seeing it?
Yes, you are. Your screen shows the, the graphics. Yes.
Fantastic. So, um, access to this application is now available, um, in two forms. One, obviously here on the Sustainable Development and Urban Design and Planning section within the city of Fort Lauderdale's website. Uh, and I'll talk to that here in a second, as well as you can get directly to this application via fortlauderdale dot gridx dot com. Both via a mobile browser as well as a desktop browser is a complete cloud-based application. On the city website, you can see there's three components and, and one of the aspects of our, our system that, uh, we like to highlight it is that it brings all the, uh, zoning information into one, uh, common website to make it easier for citizens to, you know, virtually access. Quite a bit of, uh, in-depth information. There's three components here. Uh, I'm not going to go into all of them today, but, uh, we have a three D zoning map, which our product is the only, uh, system out there able to do that at this time. In addition, it has the published, uh, unified land development regulations code, as well as, um, a parcel zoning check to make it easy for citizens and staff just to type in an address and get deep, um, development capacity and zoning attribute data about each parcel. Um, when entering the three D zoning map, I'm just going to focus on our projects module today. Uh, there is detailed data to be able to type in an address and jump directly to properties. Uh, but in the time we have, we wanted to showcase the projects module, which highlights, um, active developments underway. This is a both two D and three D, uh, map platform. And as I zoom in here, you'll see the, uh, existing built context come to life of the, the city itself. So we have some detail here in terms of the downtown skyline. I'll, I'll zoom in and then come back out. Uh, but you can get some of the recognizable buildings that are there today.
This is, this, uh, this is as built right now, correct?
This is as built right now, correct? Um, the three D map allows you to spin it around and get kind of different context. And so, uh, the projects module is one of the modules here on the left. Uh, we've broken up, uh, existing projects into downtown, north west regional activity center, as well as central beach. I'm going to start with downtown, but ultimately what this system does is it pulls data, uh, from the permitting system to, uh, give users the ability to see projects that are either under construction, uh, that have been approved, but maybe not yet broken ground. As well as, uh, projects that are in review, but not yet approved. And so simply when turned on, you, you start to get, um, a three D context of these different categories of projects. Let me zoom in here real quick. And you get some architectural detail about what's actually going up. So, um, in downtown, as I'm sure you all are familiar, uh, these fuchsia slash pink kind of projects are the ones that are under construction. And there's likely, they're either, either getting finished up or, or there's cranes in the sky on some of these as we speak. Um, when you mouse over the actual project, we give you some details about what it is, what's being developed, how many units, what the height is, who the developer is, et cetera. And if there's some square footage around office and, um, commercial on the ground floor, for example. Um, and again, as, as you see, we've worked with development services to, to, to bring some architectural context to what is actually going up there and color coded these based on whether they're under construction or in, in development. Or I'm sorry, under construction or. Or I'm sorry, under construction or approved, but not yet, uh, broken ground. If we work out our way out to the beach, I'll go ahead and, uh, do that first. Uh, we've, we've highlighted these, uh, sections first. Let me get out here. Uh, you can actually start to see some of the details around the central beach area as well that are under construction. Let me turn these on. And so you can focus in on these areas and start to see what's going on in that part of town. As we move the map, you can see, um, the actual projects that are under construction here as well as over here. And then lastly, we've, we've, uh, also organized this, uh, based on timeline. I'm not going to go into.
Can you move the map over just to the right a little bit so we can see the Bahia Mar site?
No, the other, the other way. Oh, there we go. Yeah, the big one.
All the blue? Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Can you folk, can you zoom in on that?
Sure.
So that's, that's been approved, right?
Yes, we have that as approved, but not yet under construction status.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Um, and so this is just the projects module. There's the ability to, you know, filter actual records in here. Click on actual parcels and get down to the detailed level. Uh, but we wanted to showcase this today. Also indicate that it, it is a kind of a unified platform that does make it easy for people to access the actual code and just look up properties quickly. Um, since launching and rolling out to making it public, um, around the second week of March, uh, we have seen about 3,000 visits, um, to this, uh, this, this website here. Um, so with that, uh, we'll open up to questions.
Jason, this is, uh, Vice Mayor Moradis. I have a question. I, I love the dropdown. I just am curious if we could possibly add District One. So I see downtown, northwest and central. So we have an area kind of called uptown. Um, I mean, is that, obviously it's included somewhere. It's just not a dropdown. Is that correct?
So started with these three sections. Um, I, I might defer to, to Ella on, um, the actual projects there. But we can certainly expand upon this. Uh, the, the, the hard work has been done. And if we need to kind of add different, uh, projects in different, you know, focus areas, we can certainly do that.
Sure. Well, right now I don't think any of my district is included. Um, and I'm, I'm, uh, north of sunrise, the rest of the city. So, uh, we do have a lot of, not a lot. We have a few projects in the uptown area and some coming along federal highway and the beach, which would be the, the galt area too.
So this, this survey doesn't include?
I don't know. I'm, I, the sort of time I'm seeing it.
Could you go to the northern part of the city?
Hey Jason, this is Al. Uh, they want to see the area up near where the stadium is.
Or, or east from the state Cypress Creek Road to the beach. Do we, so we do have it included. It's just not a dropdown.
The east of that. Okay.
So it's included, like we have a residential development coming off of 95 and Cypress, the Fairfield. That's probably on there because it's been approved.
I don't think we have any active projects in here, but we can certainly work with Al's team to add that.
So we definitely have active projects. Uh, so yeah, it would be great to, uh, we voted on things and we are reviewing things in DRC and PNC. Uh, and obviously we probably put that stadium on there. Thank you.
I think your point is good too, in that, um, Jason, another possible, um, addition would be, there are four geographic city commission districts. So I think as a dropdown, it'd be great if you overlaid those geographic boundaries of the four, uh, city commission districts there to, um, to then, um, add those as dropdowns to drill in. Does that make sense, Jason?
Yeah, that does. And I think we actually have those shaped. So we can, we could organize it by that. So we can add different menus here to where they can look at it by area of town or actually by district. And, um, that's fine.
Perfect. Yeah, this is great. Thank you. Thank, thanks, Vice Mayor, Mayor.
Any other questions, Vice Mayor?
Nope.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission?
Put me on the map.
Do you have more to your presentation?
No, I think that's it unless Ella or Al, um, unless I missed anything.
Okay, um, Al, do you want to add to this?
Uh, no, nothing from us. I think, um, there evidently is information embedded there, uh, Vice Mayor, uh, members of the commission that we can highlight differently. As Jason said, they have the technology, of course, to highlight and show information as, as we need. So we'll continue to work with them on massaging what you see.
I mean, we probably have 10 projects in the works, but I, I think the neighbors would appreciate.
Sure. Yeah. Sure. Can you move, can you move the map back down to the downtown area, please, Jason? And can you include, uh, approved and under construction? Right. So of, I mean, I know this is scary, but if you look at what's approved and under construction, it almost doubles the number of buildings that are currently there. And this is without any additional city approval, city commission approval going forward. All of this has been approved. And or under construction. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the people in the community. All right. Thank you so much, Al, and thank you, Jason. And, uh, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, we're on business three. This is a presentation regarding potential amendments to the unified land development regulations concerning a number of different items, including guest parking, garbage bin location, uh, height and opacity of fences, parklets, convenience stores, gas station fuel state, fuel sales, rooftop screening and sidewalks. How are you on this too?
I, I'm here to present this one as well, uh, Mayor. You accurately described.
Go ahead.
The press, the points of the presentation. Staff is here to present, um, and get feedback and direction from the commission on these items. They've been discussed. Uh, specific dates are listed in the memo back in November of 2020. And, uh, earlier this year, specific items to that effect. And there are also some items that we've heard, uh, and wanted to get your feedback on as well that we find, uh, might be possible for some, uh, code amendments. So, uh, Carleen Grant, uh, from our staff is going to make the presentation, uh, on the phone, uh, with us is also, uh, on the call. The Zoom call is, uh, Anthony Fardo, our director. So he is going to, uh, be available in case there are any questions, um, that he can dive into. So, um, without further ado, I believe it's on the screen and I'm going to turn it over to Carleen. How are you?
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioner. Carleen Grant with Sustainable Development. As Al mentioned, this is a, uh, presentation on the proposed amendments to the unified land development regulations. To receive your direction and your feedback, the proposed amendments are for, as you mentioned, the guest parking and garbage container placement for townhouse and cluster developments. The height and transparency of fences in the front yards, convenience stores with gas stations, nonprofit business application fees, parklet location expansion, rooftop screening and sidewalk policy. As I go through each of the proposed amendment, I will pause at the end to give an opportunity for you all to ask any questions or provide your feedback. And I should note that the presentation was updated just a bit. Um, so it's not the same as what you have in your backup. Okay, next slide. Could you pull it up a little bit more, I think? Oh, there you go. Okay. So the first proposed amendment is for guest parking for townhouse and clustered development. This was an item that was sent as a communication to you all from the planning and zoning board earlier this year. The main concern from the planning and zoning board is that there is insufficient guest parking from, um, that is being identified on development plans. Even though there are garages that are built, most often they are used for storage. And so owners are, and guests tend to sometimes spill over onto this well, which can cause prob, problems for drainage, aesthetics for the development. The existing code requires two parking spaces per dwelling unit and an additional 0.25 for guest parking if the development has five or more, uh, dwelling units. And so staff is proposing to amend the code to require one guest parking space per unit and also add to the criteria to address garages, um, not being able to back out into a shared drive aisle. Any questions or comments from the commission?
I do. Mayor, is it okay for us to ask questions after each different, um, item?
I think that would make the most sense.
Okay. Thank you. Carleen, hi, how are you?
Hi, good. How are you?
Good. Thank you. Nice to see you. Um, right now code requires parking based on number of bedrooms, but what is that ratio? What is that percentage? Because yes, I could not agree with you more. I hear lots of, lots of complaints about lack of parking in and around townhome and cluster developments, um, with parking all over sidewalks, parking all over swales. Um, but right now, what is it? Because I'm thinking for sure we need one guest parking space per unit. What is that ratio right now in terms of what percentage is based on the number of bedrooms? How many spaces?
So actually there is a, a slight, slight tweak for that mention on the, on the slide right here. For townhouse and cluster, it's actually placed on dwelling units, not on bedrooms. So it's two parking spaces per dwelling unit. And then if it's a development that has five or more residential units being proposed, then there's an additional 0.25, um, space provided for guest parking. It's not.
Well, so why? Okay. So that slide should say parking based on?
Two per dwelling unit. Correct.
So you have to have two spaces per dwell, two parking spaces per dwelling unit. In addition to now you're asking for one guest parking space per unit?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay. And right now there's nothing in the code with regards to guest parking spaces per unit?
Right now it only acts with 0.25 to, per unit. So you get a quarter of a parking space.
So it's one guest parking space for every four units.
Correct.
Okay. Um, well, one guest parking space for every four units, that might not even be enough, but it's better than what it is now.
No, that is what it is now.
That's what it is now.
That's the existing requirement.
Okay, I understood you.
Space per unit as opposed to one space for units.
Thank you. I understand. Um, yes, much better. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay.
Any other questions?
You keep going.
Hearing none. I'm going to move on. So the next issue is also something that came up at planning and zoning board, uh, for clusters and townhouses. This would be for garbage container placement for developments. Um, the main issue is that it is often not specified on the development plans to determine if parked vehicles and garbage bins can be accommodated in the garage. And so as a result, the garbage bins and the garbage bin end up being displaced or left in front of the house. Our existing code only requires that the containers shall be removed from the roadside on day of collection and returned to secure location on the property. And that other than being stored in a garage or carport, garbage containers are required to be stored behind the building line, unless it is screened from the public by shrubbery, foliage, um, fence or a wall. And so staff is proposing to add co-language to require designated location of garbage containers on development plans. Any questions?
Any questions on that? Doesn't seem to be too terribly controversial. Okay, keep going.
Okay. And so the next, the next amendment would be for fences and regarding height and transparency. This was actually also an item that was sent as a communication. This came from the Board of Adjustment that requested, uh, for commission to direct staff to consider amendments to the fence code, to consider flood elevation and site screening, and also to include a clearer option for architectural features on top of fences. The current requirement states that the maximum height of an accessory structure such as a fence are measured from the finished ground surface of the neighboring property. This requirement, um, can reduce the overall height of the fence. And so this has created the need for variance request for applicants who have concerns about privacy and safety. As part of that discussion, when it came to you all, uh, as a communication, Mayor Trent Ellis actually also raised his concerns about the height and transparency for the front yard with the fences. Um, as you all know, tall fences in the front yards does not allow for visual connection and it can be a safety and aesthetic, um, and, um, implications. Currently, the code regulates, uh, fences to be up to six feet, six inches high in the front yard with an average three foot landscape setback at the street. And so to address the Board of Adjustment concerns, staff is recommending that the base height of the fence be measured from the base theme of flood elevation of the development site and not of the neighboring, uh, finished ground surface. Uh, staff is also proposing to lower the height for any portions of the fence located with, within the front yard setback and to provide minimum transparency. To accommodate pools, which are required to be placed in the front yard, we have to require at least a four foot, uh, height, um, with specified transparency. The height reduction will not apply to the rear side and corner yards within the front setback to maintain, um, some privacy. Any questions?
I do. Yes. Thank you for your presentation. Great job. Um, I brought this up in my district meeting last night and nobody liked it. Sorry. Um, mostly what I'm talking about is the front yard fence. We just have properties in District One that have different setbacks. Some of them are set back very far and they only have a front lawn. So, uh, a lot of my neighbors even on the call last night actually had pools in the front. And the whole privacy thing doesn't work with the pools in the front because you really don't want people seeing you out front at by your pool and your bathing suit. Uh, so that, nobody liked it. Um, we did talk about one property owner lived on a corner unit and she said she had a fence in her front yard also. She actually said there may be a different, um, there are some restrictions already for a front yard fence on a corner unit to make sure it is safe. So you can see when you're going around the corner. I'm not sure what that is currently.
That is correct. That's for the site triangle. So to make sure if you have a vehicle, for instance, approaching the corner yard, that they'll be able to see vehicles that are coming on the other side.
So we currently have that. So there are some safety measures in effect, but sorry, but nobody.
Unfortunately, people's plant trees and shrubs in that triangle. So it completely obscures the, uh, the vision when you're trying to look for oncoming traffic. Um, but that's another story.
That's another issue, but, um, it was pretty, there was a consensus last night. It was probably unanimous. Nobody liked the front yard fence restrictions.
Well, the thing is that, um, if somebody has a pool in their front yard, I can understand how they'd want the six foot to height. That makes sense. But for, but my concern is that I go around, even in my own neighborhood, or should say especially in my own neighborhood, where, uh, it, it'd be, it just looks like it's a, it's a barricade, you know, in front of all the houses. Sometimes there's three or four houses in a row that have a six foot, uh, six inch, um, fence usually wouldn't, usually not kept up. And, um, and you really lose that connection, as you say, uh, with, with the house and the street. It just looks like one long barrier. So, um, I would imagine that we could make an exception for those homes that have, um, pools in the front yard because I, isn't there a state law?
It's a baby fence type thing, but it's not the big wood fence.
Is there a height minimum if there's, I know, I don't know if you know, it's off the top of your head, but.
You have to have a baby fence. I mean, I, I know, or some kind of gate and things like that.
Right. But I think there's a.
A pool in our backyard.
But I think anywhere you have a pool, you have to have a fence and I don't know.
With a latch that's up high and yeah.
Oh, it is. Yeah.
There, there does have to be a fence, but I don't know the height.
I, it is 42 inches.
Forty two. Forty four inches for a pool?
For the pool. If you have a pool, then the, the height of the fence has to be at least 42 inches.
Okay.
Which is what we are proposing to keep for the front yard.
And you're proposing it. I, I agree with you, Mayor, that it looks better not to have it. But I mean, we are living in neighborhoods that really weren't even designed for us to, I mean, my neighborhood's a retirement community. That's how it was planned in the sixties. I mean, it wasn't meant for a family of, you know, 10 to live in this house. But, uh, I, I don't know. There is just.
I got some of those same emails. I got some of those same emails. People saying, you know, the setbacks are, are, you know, the, the house is set back further from the street because the lots are, are bigger, but, um.
Probably smaller. I mean, my neighborhood has smaller lots compared to Coral Ridge. And I mean, my own house is set way back. And I mean, I really don't have a backyard either, even though I don't have a fence in my front yard. I don't know. Just nobody was happy with that in District One. So I'm okay with what you said about the backyard fence, making it a little taller because of the flood elevation. I'm okay with that. Um, but the, the front yard, we had problems with.
Does anybody else have any thoughts with regard to front yard fencing?
Mayor, can I have a, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Maybe it's to staff, not so much you. This ordinance that we're discussing, is it for proposed development, or what's on our books now?
It will be if you are proposing to install a fence.
Okay, so, I think what Mayor, I know particularly the Vice Mayor, and I kind of have it too, in some of the land uses that we incorporated a lot of these areas that weren't part of the city originally. Like, I have county ordinance that supersede our ordinance, like in Merrose. They can put the fences up because of old county ordinance that they grandfathered in during the annexation. I've got some other land use issues like this on 19th Street and 27th Avenue, where I've got a lot of industrial stuff there. And you have people storing vehicles inside fences that we wouldn't ordinarily permit. But it falls under that grandfathering that we accepted in annexations. And there's nothing I can do when they're parking, you know, semi-tractor, trailer trucks, campers, and anything on grass with this, what it looks like is a temporary fence. So, could some of these interpretations be because of what was on the books and we can't touch? Or are we allowed to do what each and every one of us are indicating today we'd like to see moving forward?
Can you respond to that?
So for the annexed areas that you just mentioned, Commissioner McKenzie, we're not proposing to touch that. In fact, we can't touch some of those zoning districts. When they were annexed in, they were annexed in with their own ordinance. And so, we're not, we're not going to be touching those areas. This would only be for the regular residential zoning districts that were already within the city.
And that's what I wanted you to disclose, because I've been fighting for like six years, you know, to to deal with this, because the residents tell us what we present here in this open forum. And there's some areas that, you know, I don't have any teeth in. So, to have something like this, a tool that we can use to, you know, prevent this in the future, I think is a great tool. But I would really like to see-
So, Commissioner McKenzie?
Yeah.
Let me ask. So, they come into the city as, by annexation, and they have an existing fence. Let's say a person wants to come in and build another fence, not already, not already on their property. Are they subject to the city rules, or are they subject to the county rules?
They're subject to the county rules from when it was annexed in. So, that ordinance that, at the time that it was annexed in, it's frozen. So they are not going to be able to apply for the regulations that are existing in the county. Only if it's the same that is, it is now, then yes. But it would still be the ordinance that we originally adopted when they were annexed in.
That we-
That's a good question, Mayor, but that's why I asked it, because this fence, the one on 19th Street I'm talking about, actually appeared in the last couple of years, and they fell under the county ordinance. You know, it's one thing if it was sitting there. And you just indicated with your question, the answer, that there's nothing we can do about it. And that's the problem I'm having in that area, and especially in Merrose. I mean, people just throwing these fences up in their front yards, parking food trucks, you know, all sorts of equipment in a residential neighborhood. So, I don't know how we can, you know, address that, but it is an issue. But we gotta answer, there's nothing we can do.
I see that Anthony has his hand up. I don't know if you would like to also respond?
Is Anthony Farhado on the line?
He's here, Anthony, but we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to add some clarity. It's not that you can't change the ordinance for the annexed areas. When those areas were annexed, they had an agreement with the city, and we basically stated at that time that we would develop a special ordinance for them. In some cases, it was keeping some of the ordinance language from the county. In some cases, it was using ordinance language that was existing on the books. And in some cases, we developed new language to address some of the concerns. So, what I would say is that we could definitely go back and look at those ordinances, but I wouldn't offer that we should arbitrarily change them without going to those individual communities and talking to them in more detail, because they do have a little bit of a special consideration that the rest of the city did not, once they were annexed in.
And I like that, Anthony, but the problem we've, at least I've been experiencing, is that from a coding perspective, there's nothing we can do because of the agreement we made. So therefore, they're allowed to come in and put this temporary fence up and do as they please when others in our city are trying to follow these rules that we're putting in place for safeguards and for concerns, legitimate concerns, as you've heard tonight. And I would really love to go back and revisit it if we can, especially in these areas. I know I have two of them in my district, and it seems like we have them in the Northern District, Heather's District. And that might be the reason why we're struggling with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand. And we could definitely take a look at that and come back with some recommendations for you if you'd like.
Okay.
Thank you.
That'd be a good idea. But, so getting back to the main thing. Maybe there's not one sense, it's all solution to this, but maybe it could be based on the square footage of the lot, or the setback from the street, or we need to perhaps become a little bit more specific. But we really need to find a way to reduce the amount of these six-foot-six fences that line, you know, whole sections of streets. And it makes for a very packed streetscape.
So, does that, are we talking about all fences, Mayor? Say we got a wrought iron fence, or these cool fences you see in some of our more upscale neighborhoods where they're putting these fences in the front yards. Does it apply to all fences, or just obscure wooden fences?
These are the ones you can't see through. I have a wall in my house, which is basically a, it has columns, and it has a, it has a grate. So you can see, I mean, you can see right through it.
Okay.
It's a, but it's not, it's, you know, six feet tall, I guess. And, but you can see through it. So that's, that's not what we're talking about. All these wooden, you know-
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a question for Carlann, or Anthony, if he's still on. I, you know, I get a lot of comments from the Sailboat Bend Historic District with regards to fences. So I just want to know what the implications are for the historic district with regards to any of these recommendations or the issue itself.
Okay, I don't think, I thought Anthony was gonna answer that. So the historic districts actually have their own requirements for fences, so they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be considered for this proposed amendment?
So, there are no implications here in any of these recommendations or issues with regards to the Sailboat Bend Historic District?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
No, I think maybe a landscaping requirement. I'm looking at this slide, and, you know, the fence that's X-ed out, the wood fence, that's really not what I see when I see fences in the front yard. I do see them set back a little bit with the landscaping in front. Like I said, it's not ideal, but when people are just trying to make the best use of the space we have to, you know, enjoy your property, it's, we have limited options.
Okay, continue.
Okay, thank you. So the next amendment is for convenience stores and gas station. The issue is that currently, the code requires a minimum distance separation from a house of worship, public parks, hospitals, and school. The distance separation requirement has resulted into limited locations. And so, there we have an applicant that is asking for relief from that requirement. And so, we are proposing to analyze the code criteria, the history and intent of the original code language, and any potential impacts to determine if exempting convenience stores with gas station from the distance requirement is appropriate. Any questions? Hearing none, I will move forward.
Okay.
The next amendment, actually, the next item would be for the nonprofit business application fees. The city commission adopted a new fee schedule for the Urban Design and Planning Division back in September of last year, which is based on 100% cost recovery. As part of that new fee schedule, the review of permit types, such as zoning review for liquor licenses, has now been identified. Since the fees were adopted, a nonprofit organization have requested consideration of the fee being reduced or waived for business applications for nonprofit businesses for sign-offs, such as the zoning review for liquor license zoning review. However, upon analyzing this request a bit further, it has been determined that the fee cannot be waived or reduced because it is a regulatory fee. So we actually won't be able to do anything about it. So moving on.
Carlann, or Mayor?
Yeah.
Can we just talk about this a second?
Go ahead.
Thanks. Because I do hear about this particular issue, how it's tough for some of our nonprofits, and especially some of our neighborhoods. And I do see a hand raised. I don't know if the public is allowed to speak now after each unit, or are you going to be dealing with it at the end in terms of public input? But I do know that Dylan's on from Mass District. This has been a big concern of his.
There's only one person who signed up to speak, and that's Dylan.
Right, I think his hand is raised now, but did you want to, is it able to go to him right now? Or do we have to wait for the public later? Whatever works for you.
I'm waiting for the public later.
Okay. Because this is definitely an issue that I'd like us to be able to discuss. But I'll wait till we're able to get from everyone. Thank you.
You don't, okay, I was encouraging you to make your comments after each issue, but you don't. Is there some, is it, which issue is-
Well, I just think that this is an issue that we need to discuss in terms of, you know, the application fees and neighborhoods and other nonprofits. It's expensive, so I just want us to be able to have that conversation. And I'll wait to also hear from Dylan, as you said, he's the one person that's signed up. So, that'll also add to the conversation. He's had firsthand experience with it, so thank you.
Okay, very good. Continue.
Okay, thank you. So the next item would be for parklet locations. A parklet location is a platform that is installed within an existing parallel parking, allowing for tables and chairs to enhance pedestrian experience. Parklets are currently only permitted in CB, B1, RAC CC, and RAC UV zoning districts. But they are being requested for additional locations in other areas of the city. We've heard from property owners, specifically on Los Solos Boulevard, for instance, that would like to install parklets. The parklet regulations were adopted in 2014 with the specific zoning district that I mentioned above, and also having limitations such as streets with three limits of 25 miles per hour or less, existing on-street parking spaces, specific standards for slope of 5% or less, or parklets, and then also allowing for parklets to be removed subject to the requests that is deemed necessary. And so, staff is proposing to add the RAC TMU District, which includes areas such as East Los Solos Boulevard, in order to have an active area with popular restaurants, bars, and motel establishments to be able to benefit from this additional dining option. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Carlann, so especially with regards to your recommendation on East Los Solos, have you had any coordination, discussion concerning the Los Solos Mobility Working Group Plan? As you know, that's coming to the commission back in the evening, I believe, on May 4th. I just want to make sure that, you know, the left arm's talking to the right arm, and making sure that what you're proposing here and recommending is something that's, you know, going to work well with the recommendations coming forward to the commission.
Okay, I did not, but I see, again, Anthony has his hand raised, so perhaps he has. If you can have-
Anthony, do you want to respond to this? Anthony Farhado? Anthony, you raised your hand. Were you stretching?
Not sure.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Now that I've demonstrated my mastery of Zoom. So, we reached out to Transportation Mobility to discuss this item, and right now, we're just seeking direction from the City Commission on whether or not to move forward. We would absolutely engage all parties that would be interested in providing us any feedback. We mentioned East Los Solos in the presentation, but East Los Solos is a little bit of a misnomer because there are flexible parking spaces on portions of it. What we're really talking about, so for instance, Cuba Libre, which is the new Mexican restaurant, I believe at 8th and Los Solos, has requested a parklet, and they want it on the cross street, not necessarily on Los Solos itself. So, I hope that clarifies the question and, you know, gives you some confidence level. But we would definitely engage those groups and get their feedback on it before we put anything in writing for consideration to the City Commission.
No, that's great. Actually, Anthony, I think a restaurant named Cuba Libre is probably Cuban, not Mexican. Just, that's just my thought.
Oh, well, you know, and as someone with Cuban heritage, I should probably know that, so thanks for correcting.
I think the name is a giveaway, but, you know, what am I? How do I know? What do I? But, okay, I appreciate that. As long as you're talking to Ben and Transportation Mobility, it's just sometimes I find that, you know, as I said, the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing, and as long as we're all talking together, that's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Please continue.
Okay, so the next proposed item is for the rooftop screening. Currently, rooftop screening may result in reengineering for existing roof structures at a significant cost. The current code requires that all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be required to be screened with material if that matches the material used by the principal structure. It shall be at least six inches above the topmost surface of the roof-mounted structure. The Florida Building Code often requires reengineering of the existing roofs to accommodate wind loads of added screening. However, staff is recommending to amend the language to exempt roofs that would require reengineering to accommodate screening on existing buildings.
Any questions with regard to that? This is for, this is only, this is only in situations where they are replacing the mechanicals and things like that.
There are times when they are adding additional mechanical equipment as well, like an AC unit.
Right, but it's not, it's not because not, everyone doesn't have to go out there now and change everything.
That is correct.
It's changes that are being made.
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, and, you know, just like you were talking about the streetscapes with the homes, and then you showed us exactly what's happening in terms of all of the new buildings that we're seeing, either in the pipeline or, you know, already shoveling the ground. This is another issue, especially with, we're gonna have people looking down at people's roofs. We need to do everything we can to make the roofs, you know, green, to make them sustainable, to make them so it's not just an ugly mechanical view for everybody. And I'm all in favor of the screening. I'm in favor of the projects, some of which I've seen, where, you know, the rooftops are really quite attractive to look at. You know, it's a whole different concept, but I think we should do everything we can to make sure that the roofs of all of these buildings are something that everyone wouldn't mind looking at.
Well, it's interesting that you raised that point, because you might recall when Aqua Blue was being proposed, the building next to it, the Corinthian, insisted that the building be lower than their building. As a result, as the building was being built, and as it was topping off, and it was finishing it, the people from the Corinthian started complaining that they now had to look at the mechanicals on the building that Aqua Blue was just built. And I said, "Well, that's what you wanted," and so that became a little bit of a controversy. But, you know, there are a lot of new tall buildings downtown, like the Hyatt Centric and the Icon. You know, you go to the tops of those buildings, and what do you see? You see the tops of the older buildings, and they're not that pretty. You see the, I mean, this law, this proposal says it has to be six inches above the topmost surface of the roof-mounted structure. But when your 20 floor is higher, that extra six inches is really irrelevant. I'm thinking you should perhaps cover it. Instead of just building a wall around it, you should perhaps cover it, even if it's with a perforated, you know, air- The air can come in and out of it. If we could cover the mechanicals so that you don't see it from upper floors, that might be the ultimate solution here.
But if you look at the recommendations, staff is proposing exempting roofs that would require any kind of reengineering to accommodate screening or existing buildings. So do, is that what we want? We want exempt buildings and roofs?
They have to reengineer.
Yeah.
That's the difference. If you're just, if you're just putting, you know, something, so, because some of these reen- some of these things really are extremely expensive. They have to reengineer and and cut into the roof and all that other stuff, so. But I mean, going forward, I think when we make approvals on future buildings, we should require that there be a covering over the mechanic- mechanicals as opposed to just a wall around it.
Great.
Next.
Yes, thank, thank you.
Okay, and the last item would be for the sidewalk installation. Uh the issue with this is that there is lack of supporting code language to address when sidewalks are required to be exa- be installed. The existing code, uh section twenty-five dash fifty-six of the Code of Ordinance allows exemptions from the requirements to install sidewalks associated with development. These existing language for exemption may include, well, does include, I should say, uh the city commission not determining that the sidewalks are desirable, drainage problems that will exist or will be created with installing the sidewalks, adjacent properties not having to install the sidewalks, no sidewalks being constructed in the original subdivision development, or if you have a right of way that is less than fifty feet in width. And so staff is proposing to add code language that will address the sidewalk and waiver criteria criteria. The uh requirements would be for regional activities centers to be to be required to install sidewalks with limited exceptions. They will also be required in neighborhoods that have adopted planned supporting sidewalks and on all primary and secondary arterial streets. An exemption would be to consider context and factors such as drainage, travel speeds, and proximity to school and parks within practical or not necessary for safety. Any questions?
Any questions?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. And probably just for clarification purposes, Carlann, under the waiver criteria, and you can read it two different ways, and I just want to make sure that you're, you know, you can clarify. When you're saying that consider context and factors such as drainage, travel speeds, proximity to schools, parks, et cetera, are are you saying there that it might be okay not to have sidewalks by schools? Or what exactly is that meaning, the waiver of the criteria? Because I often hear from folks that they really are disappointed not to have safe ingress and egress to school for, you know, the children. But how do you read this waiver criteria exactly? What what is it saying?
So I of with regards to proximity to school and parks, if it's not within close proximity, uh typically like a quarter mile, for instance, then they can make the argument that they don't need to install. That is something that we would consider as an exemption.
Okay, it's, yeah, it it it's, I mean, I I just think it's very important to have them, um especially, you know, as a way for, you know, young people to travel safely. But okay, it's, it was a little confusing the way it's written, but that's okay. Thank you.
I don't, I I don't think, I think it should be very rare that uh a sidewalk is necessity is waived. So I think we actually have to let, th- this is too broad a consideration for waiver. So I don't, how can we change this to make it much more limited to permit a waiver?
Oh, so um as I mentioned, it most likely will be based on how close you are. So um proximity in terms of distance, maybe by feet or by miles to a school or a park. That would determine whether it would be exempted.
Yeah, what I'm saying is that that should not matter. It it doesn't, you should still be required to have a sidewalk if you're a thousand feet from a school.
Okay, I think we unders- yes, we we understand the position.
Okay.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I think Anthony would also like to add, because I see his raising.
Is he raising his hand?
Yep.
Anthony, you're on. But you have to unmute yourself.
You're, you're muted.
Okay, try it again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, no, all I was gonna say was that the criteria you're seeing um should be taken in consideration of other factors, right? So it's not just if you're this far from a school, you automatically get a waiver. But I I was only gonna add that for clarification purposes. I think to the city manager's point, we understand the direction, and we'll take a look at the language and come back with something for your consideration.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Andy. And I think, I mean, I'm guessing we're we're pretty, the commission's pretty aligned on this of we would like more sidewalks and that, uh, yeah, the a a very narrow waiver opportunity.
Understood.
Okay. Mayor, is that, is that, am I representing us okay in terms of?
I think that, I think that makes the most sense. You know, I live near two schools and um I know that uh, you know, it'd be better if we had more sidewalks because kids do walk to school, they take their skateboards to school, they bike to school, and there are no sidewalks, uh except right around the school property. And um uh that's a dangerous condition. And uh especially when you have school buses and you have moms rushing to and from bringing their kids to school in their SUVs and um it's really, it's amazing that nothing worse has happened over the years. But I agree with you that, you know, more sidewalks are better than fewer sidewalks. So if there are waiver considerations being identified, uh they should be narrowly construed.
Understood.
Great, thanks. Thank you.
Dylan Legai, who's asked to speak, don't go away. Uh Dylan, are you still on the line? Dylan?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
The host just unmuted me. Thank you, Mayor and Commission and staff. Uh may I just go ahead and give my explanation behind that one particular slide?
Which was?
That was the nonprofit item with fees.
Sure.
Okay, so um this is only with one particular application with the state of Florida. The state of Florida allows in their DBPR uh department to apply for a temporary liquor sales license to raise money for the non- said, uh the applying nonprofit. Uh it's a license that only goes for three days. It's a maximum of three days, and you can get twelve a year. Um so, and it's twenty-five dollars with the state of Florida per license. So us and other nonprofits in the in the city here that have worked with us were a little bit taken back when we all of a sudden had to start paying a hundred dollars just to the city on top of the twenty-five dollars for the state. I don't know if Carlann was saying the regulatory item uh that she mentioned might be related to other types of licenses that are applied for, to which absolutely I feel are justified in their fee structures. It's just this one particular uh three-day license that helps raise money for the nonprofit that we brought up with Commissioner Glassman. And thank you again, Commissioner Glassman, for your time with this item. I don't know if staff had any comment on that, or if you guys had thoughts on that.
Anyone have to, any response to that?
If I may, Mayor, um Alan Bello, City Attorney.
Yes.
Regardless, it it is still a regulatory fee. As you know, we have two kinds of fees. We have a user fee and regulatory fee. When we have a regulatory fee, we're we're limited and we're relegated to charging our hard costs, and we can't offer either partial or full waivers. The only thing that can be done is if the city chooses either not to have one at all, but that would apply across the board, which you can't. Um and then you would uh possibly contribute towards that fee, but that would take, that that would be a contribution from the city. It wouldn't be a waiver, so that would come out of uh general funds. So essentially, we can't just waive part of it or discount it or do anything like that because it's regulatory, unlike a user fee.
Okay. Anyone have any res- comments or response to what Mr. Bello just said?
Well, I do, Mayor. It just, you know, it it just, I I don't understand why we would want to put a a hundred dollars on top of just what's a twenty-five dollar fee by the state for three days of an event. Um it I I don't know. It it just seems a bit, it seems a bit much to me. Um it it's already a paid-for event, it's already a permitted event, and we're just adding on to what's a very nominal fee. I, doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I think what Mr. Wall- Wallum said is that it just reflects the actual out-of-pocket uh cost to the city for processing the permit and reviewing the application, so.
But what did we do all the year, what did we do all the years prior?
We we didn't discount it.
But why all of a sudden now we're we're changing course with this new regulatory fee?
Mayor, it's Anthony. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Glassman, this was one of the fees that was identified as something that we weren't capturing or captured correctly in previous fee study. So what would happen before is when the proc- when the applicant came through for a temporary liquor license, staff had to process the application, do some basic zoning research to find out whether or not it's something that's permissible in that area, usually a pretty easy question to ask. The fees that were established were based on average staff time to do the work. And so with the hundred percent cost recovery, that's that's how the fee was was created and how it ended up in the ordinance the way it did.
Okay, again, I I mean, we're we're just adding a hundred dollars on to something that someone could do typically for all these years for twenty-five dollars from the state. I again, it's just, I I understand what everyone's saying, um but you know, we didn't charge for the stamp. I don't, I don't, I, again, it's not making sense to me, but I, and I hear what you're saying. I just don't think it's uh a necessary policy.
Well, I think based on what I'm hearing from the conversation, there is a desire to see if we can come to some resolution on it. So I, what I could offer is let me talk to Alan and Dwayne about some options that we might be able to consider. I don't know if they'll work or not, but we can definitely come back and let you know if we've been able to determine anything else that could work.
Okay.
Well, but Alan said the only way what we could do was, you know, let's not, you know, belabor this. Alan's saying we, if we waived it, we have to waive it for everybody. We can make a contribution to, which would in that, which would give the net effect of reducing the cost. But the reality is we still have to charge the amount because that's the, that's what our ordinance requires us to do. So um if you, you know, on a case-by-case basis, if this commission decides to to contribute money to the organization for the purpose of reducing their application fee, we can certainly do that. We don't need to, we don't need to change policies or anything for that. We could just, you know, just allocate the money. Isn't that what you're saying, Alan?
Except you couldn't do it by case by case. You'd have to do it across the board. So you can't pick winners and losers there. You get yourself into trouble. So you'd have to, you'd have to find some kind of criteria to be able to uh take away the discretion and just go ahead and have an applicable formula. Again, that you you'd essentially be subsidizing through the general fund.
Anthony? It's already connected. Isn't this already connected or tied to the permit that's already been issued? So what research or what work, what has to be done that's already just not done? I mean, isn't everything done already?
No, it's not, because you have a, it's a two-step process. You have to apply to the state to get the temporary license, and you have to apply to the municipality to get it signed off on.
No, I understand. No, I understand that. They, the applicant does that. I mean, in terms of the city, um it, the work's already been done. Everything's been done, you know, they've got the license from the state, the permit from the state, rather. So i- it's already been done. So what does the city really have to do is what I'm saying.
Well, that that's, that's what I'm trying to explain, is that there are administrative portions of that that the city has to do. So when zoning gets it, they actually do research on where they're trying to put these things so that we can determine whether or not it's something that's permitted by our code. It's not just a a we get it and sign it type situation. So there is staff time that's actually real that goes into some of this work. What I was gonna suggest, and I don't want to catch the city attorney off guard, um but what I was gonna suggest is right now we have, it's effectively an average rate based on what we've seen historically for these types of fees. What we could do is look at just charging an hourly rate for these types of applications. And if it comes in less than a hundred dollars, it comes in less than a hundred dollars. In some cases, it might come in over a hundred dollars, but to the city attorney's point, we'd have to apply that across the board. So it's just at the discretion of the city commission based on what legally we can do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Any other questions? There being none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh we will now move on to uh CF one, emergency purchases for the George T. Lomar Wastewater Treatment Plant. Mr. City Manager?
Hey, Mayor, so this is in conformance with uh the charter requirement that we notify the commission after we make an emergency purchase. I would like to take just two or three minutes if we can on this one because it is a, it's a fairly significant item for the George T. Lomar Wastewater Treatment Plant. Um ask Raj to uh give you a quick uh two or three minutes as to what this emergency purchase entailed. And uh if he's prepared to do that.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh this item is essentially to comply with the consent order, the amended consent order, and the items that were, uh it's one of the several items that were required. And this is critical to keep the plant operational in case we lose the power. And it was divided into two parts. One was, and this was a very hard negotiation we had with them. Part one is putting at least one temporary generator until such time as we do, as we install the permanent generators for which we got forty-eight months. So so we have to do this within a a very, very short span of time to, for compliance. So therefore, uh we had to purchase this, and this is just for your information that we have done this.
Okay. Anyone have any questions of Raj? Okay, there being none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, uh we have any city manager reports?
I was gonna update on the boring company and the police chief recruitment. We've already done both of those, so I don't have anything additional.
Okay, any further business of the commission and the conference meeting? There being none, we'll see you at six. Thank you.